You need to call.
Okay. So I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee on October seventh, twenty five at six oh four P M. And to kick things off, we'll start with any public comments. If you join us online and you'd like to make public comments, please put your name and address in the chat and we will call on you. And if there's anyone in person that would like to make a public comment, please state your name and address.
Dawn Burnham, twenty two County Road in Essex. And I would like to talk about a donation that was made ten years ago to the school committee for a scholarship to advanced teachers and their degrees. It was donated by June Fulton, who was a phenomenal teacher at Essex Elementary. Sue Luckin and I were set up to be the people who administered this scholarship. And I have paperwork proving that the school got the money. When Sue asked about it, there was some confusion as to what the donation was for, which paperwork proved that the school was given a copy of the will and it was filed in probate that it was to be a scholarship. I've had a lot of family issues I've had to deal with over the ten years, past ten years, but this really needs to be taken care of. It is a horrible disgrace that someone who is such a wonderful teacher at Essex Elementary tried to do something so fantastic and nothing has happened. Nothing.
Thank you. This is just public.
I understand that, but I have one more thing to say. Sure. Something needs to be done. I don't, I'll meet with anyone who wants to discuss it to try and figure out what we're going to do about this. But there also has to be ten years' worth of interest added to that fifty five hundred dollars that's been sitting in the school's account and nothing has happened to it. Hopefully it's still there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person who would like to make a comment? All right. We have anyone online on the show?
No one.
All right.
No.
All right. Thank you for your call. Moving forward. We will start with our student report. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Hello again. Student report prefacing again, we still have not been able to meet as a student advisory council yet. We did have all of our class elections and the such like, so we have freshmen, juniors, and seniors. We're working on getting some sophomore people in there as well. But as soon as we have all of our people, we are going to have our first meeting and it'll be great. But for this one, still just me and the people I've interacted with in each of the grades getting the input. We're getting close to the end of the term, at the end of October, which is exciting, scary, but exciting, our first quarter. Everyone's getting very excited about Spirit Week. There's been some shitter chatter here and there. P S A T is coming up as well. And beyond that, I heard that we had a really great senior parent night last night. But honestly, there's not too much to report. Everyone's pretty much just kind of in the groove at this point. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? I don't have a specific chairman's report tonight, so we'll move right into our consent agenda. And I'll take them for the consent agenda. We'll split it up between vouchers and minutes. I know Mike wasn't there at the last meeting, so. So I'll take a motion to approve the AP vouchers one zero one five to one zero one seven and the payroll voucher from nine twenty five twenty five.
To move.
Second, second. Thank you. I need to stop them.
There's that one question, the would be finishing on the sign is that, I don't know off the top of my head, is that sign new since the re-able? It's not, that's an older sign.
There was, there was ongoing conversations about that sign.
This is the, it's, it's like the woodwork, it's the wood hung outside of the school.
Oh, it's not the one in the front?
No, there's no sign, it's a different exterior wood on side, okay. So this is, this is the sign over the front door.
Oh. So why did that happen?
It turned back the wood arch there, it just needs regular toiling and make every few years. It needs a coat. Okay, so it had not been done in about five years since the school was built.
Okay.
So it had, it had bleached basically, received complaints from.
Is there a structural issue as well if the wood dries out and is left untreated that?
Yeah, it just needs to be continually treated.
Or you would presumably incur larger costs later on and, you know.
Absolutely.
That just, I'm sorry, it just jumped out at me as, as a kind of a big expense on brand new. What feels like a brand new school, but I have to remember that as we go, becomes less brand new. Okay, thank you.
I think we did lessons learned from this facility too and had waited too long to do some of the routine maintenance. So it just built into the system now.
And something that we know for our next. Yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other additional questions? All those in favor? Speaker Alex. And then I'll take a motion to set the minutes from the school committee meeting on September sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Seven.
Seven. Second. Any discussion?
I had said, Pam, that I noticed that were the corrections made, Pam, or are we voting on the ones that were?
If you want to give Maria the correction now, I understand.
Okay, so that I had noticed that under the subcommittee assignments in print, Steve Maria had still listed Aaron Spencer and Anna Lynn Mitchell.
It's updated now on the tablet.
Okay, sure. I have no doubt, but I did that just for last meetings. Thank you.
Yes.
So does that mean?
Did you approve of a good reaction?
All those in favor? All those abstained? Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to our subject reports. I believe all of the facilities, facilities team didn't. Here tonight, so.
We did meet. And some action as well. So if I can just go through the report and then we'll take the action after, is that all right, Pam? So we met on the thirtieth of September, the full building committee. We went through an update to the roster, which will ask for action to ratify tonight. Added teachers, three teachers onto the S B C, but with one voting member. So the three of them together get one vote and the other two are named advisory capacity. And then also removed Jason Waldron, who's no longer here, and added Steve Hunt in his place as advisory member, a non-voting member. In that process, we also removed two members who have resigned from the school building committee. Adam Zegler, who moved, Andrew Crane, who resigned shortly after the election changed. And took on a different position in the town. We discussed in the meeting the balance. Someone brought up the issue of the balance of voting residents versus employees of the district. And so we did some look back in real time at what had been done for Memorial. The current membership of the S B C is large comparatively, but the distribution is aligned with past practice. And so not a vote, but as a straw poll, the S B C felt confident in keeping it as is rather than adding two more voting members, bringing up the advisory members and we need to solicit two more from Manchester. So we just voted to keep the membership as is with those changes at this time. We also got an update on the visioning group that had met, district leadership, Jake attended. A lot of teachers attended, some did school visits and basically just looking for ways to bring the Essex building into alignment with current educational program that we have across our elementary schools and current practices. We discussed in detail the site selection criteria that we'll be using, that everyone could send input on. We'll have a rubric for each of the, there are a list of criteria sort of for each of the three sites that we are discussing. And we sort of took one factor, walkability, and went through the conversation in depth of assessing it across the three sites. And within the figure configurations and you know, we came away with some, some thoughts about walkability at the different sites. But the bigger thing was that we really need to do that for each of the items and it's a time intensive process. So what we decided was that the, the working group for site development would meet, will be meeting this Friday to make an initial assessment on that kind of chart, which will then come to the full committee. So we can see where there's kind of universal agreement about things and then really dive in on the things that, that need a little bit more in-depth study. We also have consultant reports to be reviewing in process with that. So this is site selection and again, we have the great configurations to consider in the process with this. So we're really kind of diving in on some of that. We got an intro on sustainability, talked about the M S V A reimbursement, the requirements for sustainability and then the additional opportunities for additional savings or additional reimbursement to the district if we choose other sustainability measures. And we have our first of three community meetings tomorrow. It is probably the most widely publicized meeting I've ever experienced in the history of my school committee service. A mailer went to every residence in both towns. It's gone out in district communications, both newspapers. Both town administrators received the information to share as they wish in email blasts and if they chose to. Facebook has had at least ten posts, maybe more between district and private citizens. Town of Essex, the street digital side is out on School Street advertising it and the front sign in front of Town Hall plus individual and group message. So if people don't know about this meeting, I don't know how else we could possibly reach them at this point. But we'll continue trying because inevitably we'll have, you know, not reached someone and we'll get back around, but we have three of them. So if you know anyone who's interested in these comments, please love them. It's great to get all of the engagement now. What we don't want is just a group of, of yes ands. We want all of the conversation to happen now early while we have a lot of opportunity for, for different paths. That's my report, but we would seek a vote of approval. We do need to update this roster with M S B A.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Questions on the general report call? Great.
But just that, yeah, yeah, just that we need, we need to take a vote on that.
Right, right.
So the roster as presented on here reflects the current makeup of the committee. And we need the school committee vote to approve this revised roster to send to M S B A. So if anyone were willing, I can make a motion. Anyone have clarifying questions before?
Is it typical for teachers to come on like at this stage in the process or, because no teachers came off, right? There's simply being added.
Correct, and my understanding is yes, but Pam could probably speak to that. I believe it happened for the memorial build as well.
Around this.
Around this.
Thank you. Thank you to the teachers for serving on the committee.
So the only thing that I mentioned to Pam about is that Annie is not listed as a selectman in there. And so I think we should at least add her title even if we are not ready to put her in town.
Add it there, add that title there, yeah. And I spoke to Annie, she would be fine with that, so we add that title on there.
Yep, we can look at, update that before it goes up.
Right. Well, in that case, I will move that we approve the revised Essex School Building Committee roster as updated and reflecting the change just noted.
Second. All of us in favor? Speaker Alex. Thank you, Teresa.
Thanks so much.
All right. Committee did not meet. The policy and advocacy committee? Maybe?
We're coming up on the seventh, or twenty first, sixteen. It's coming.
I don't know. Okay.
It's either next year or next year.
Okay, so then we'll hold off on the first.
Oh, no, we are ready to go with the first read. This was work from our last round of the task.
Oh, okay.
So you've had the first read of the wellness part, policy in your packet. The wellness policy is a regulatory requirement that we need to have in place because of this big committee. National Food Service Program. It was, we have, what is in the policy manual is extremely dated. There was an interim version of it that just never made it to the policy manual. And the Wellness Committee started basically from scratch and really bringing the thing out down. Didn't want to step on toes, Teresa, if you want to talk a little bit about that work.
I think I covered, we covered it last time too, but it was a great collaborative effort with a really diverse representative group that worked.
So this stands, I would, I would say let's go one read, two read on this because it is really a totally new policy and not just a simple set of revisions. So just looking forward for a motion to accept it as a first read.
And then would we have more discussions? I had a comment, I wanted to be informed to do. Yes, we make a motion second. Yeah, so I'll make a motion. Ms. Spouse?
Yep.
Hey, Harry.
Oh, we'll get it.
Okay. I had a period question, sort of. It's on, I think it's the first. Under nutrition guidelines, that's a heading. And the second sentence in the first paragraph of that section says, school meals are available free of charge to all students of schools participating in the National School Lunch Program. I'm assuming we are participating. It just read like a very generic statement and I thought the wellness policy otherwise reads as a more specific policy document. In other words, that it's tailored to our school. And so that sentence to me seemed out of place, like I know we can just say we do participate. And so therefore, school meals are available free of charge. As opposed to stating that could apply to any school. Not sure if I'm being clear.
Yeah.
Because the first sentence is specific, right? It says, our school is committed to this.
Only thing I could think about is if something in our staff status changes, right? Would they maybe change the policy?
There's something outside our control and not as far as how those great lunches are funded and if that is appropriated. Bills that are fast at a national, at a national level, right?
Yeah, and the thing I'm thinking of right now is with the federal government being shut down right now.
Right.
Meals are funded through the end of October. We have no guarantee beyond that, right?
I totally wouldn't change our policy for a temporary thing, but if it.
But if it became.
If it changed permanently or something. Doesn't matter.
Matters either way, right?
Without, that might, sentence might then not be true. Maybe, right? Because.
If the program didn't.
Whereas the program was changed so that now we pay something that's stated, but still not.
It's, it's not gonna be enough.
Yeah, this is, I will go back, let me, she is, but this is, I think, very much tied to more what Michelle is responsible for.
Yeah.
Through the lunch program.
Yeah.
How we want to phrase this.
Yeah. Because there were some things like that, that it was like we.
Because it's state funding.
Put a thing that, yeah.
So let, let me get some advice on how we want to frame that. Thank you for listening.
Okay, it just.
Yeah, no. It might be an overstatement too.
So I have two things. One, there's language in there about one of the committee members serving as a liaison. Is that then identified, do we know who that is or is that too common once it's in effect?
Sorry, where are you seeing that? At the bottom?
I don't have the exact language in front of me.
Sorry, because we had talked about.
The Wellness Advisory Committee, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we've assumed that it was Teresa.
Yes, but I don't think that was necessarily designed to be a requirement because my engagement on this committee wasn't because I'm a school committee member. I had expressed interest back in previous iterations of this before that.
So we didn't power you to be a school committee representative?
That is correct. It was convenient and helpful for having someone there. So I would argue that there should be someone from the school committee representing there, especially since the policy.
But that doesn't, but that school committee member doesn't necessarily have to be the liaison as it's written policy. Could be a staff person or anybody else.
Yeah, that's the closing part. That's the losing statement.
I think, I thought we had left it that Heather was going to, or that the Director of Curriculum and Instruction was going to show this, turn as the liaison.
Okay.
That's what we had discussed in the committee, so that may be.
It says under Wellness Advisory Committee, last sentence. This is what you're talking about, one M E R S D staff member.
Yeah.
Shall serve, of the Wellness Advisory Committee shall serve as a liaison between the committee and superintendent and the school. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a school committee member.
Right. Especially since that. Okay, so the second thing, which is, that was a minor point, the second thing which, which feels like a bigger point. The section on physical and wellness education that spans page one and two, bottom of page one and the page two, which references, you know, that we will do a program that meets the frameworks. I love that statement, however, that is the shortest section of the entire policy and is probably the biggest task because the, the scope of the framework is actually quite wide. And the rest of that language in that section basically just refers to P E. Where there are one, two, there are nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different topics within frameworks. Which physical education is two of those. So it just feels like the intent of the statement and the scope of the language are mismatched.
So the way we talked about that, if I'm remembering correctly, is Heather in mind? If I'm remembering.
The one, you can just take the comments.
Yeah.
Give a little bit, give a little bit and then we can bring it back to the Wellness Committee before it comes back to you.
Yeah, that's true. It's you.
But this is the whole purpose of the subcommittee.
Right.
Just to work through the, not solve it here.
Right, yeah. I just didn't know if you were looking for context on what, but that's fine.
I know we give the context and let's take the comments.
Yeah.
Bring them back to the group to do a review.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm suggesting we remove them. The, the context of what I'm recalling to speak to what you're saying there was what we were focused on because I think we talked about that specifically. But was encapsulated in what the district will and, and those that were training the staff, training the staff primarily responsible for physical wellness, ensuring that it's taught as a required subject with the things and then engaging family members. And so you're right, because it is this huge thing to, to, to take on. And so we were trying not to recreate anything that is elsewhere within the policy.
But there's no mention in the policy elsewhere of all those other topics in, in the curriculum framework. Such as, for example, healthy relationships, mental and emotional health, nutrition and balanced eating, personal safety, right? I'm, you know, I'm just going through the major topics.
Yeah, I think those were, I think, encapsulated in wellness education, but I, I guess what I can hear is take the comment that.
I'm not hearing.
More specific.
Yeah.
You're not hearing it through, got it. That's not, got it.
My impression of this is mainly around physical health.
Well, by referencing the framework, that's what, that's my whole point. By referencing the framework here, you're actually referencing a much broader scope.
Yeah, I mean, I do think is wellness policy.
Right.
Wellness policy, so yeah, I guess. I, one of my kind of like impressions not having had a seat at the table was that there isn't that much around mental health than we're, you know, as much as physical.
Except in the beginning, the first paragraph does say, we're committed to nutritional, physical, social, and emotional.
But, but then when, when it speaks to the, it doesn't say, it doesn't really say where in the program that is, right?
I'll take this back, I just want to, I need to think on it before I make, before I comment more, so I just want to take it in and think about it.
It's a very broad comment, but I think it's kind of speaking to a shape.
Any, any other calls?
One other one I had on page three, the first bullet. It's just maybe a word choice. The, the sentence starts out with, shall comply with federal guidelines and are consistent with National School of Nutrition State. So my question was, was that intentional? Or did we mean shall comply with federal guidelines and be consistent? In other words, are you describing reality, two words, taking another part? Okay.
I'm getting dizzy, take me, I'm not used to this.
I'm not used to this yet. I was just, I'm just kidding. Not good at it. He looks.
We're in the middle of a motion. So accept the first.
But and by accepting this, basically just puts it out for public.
Going back right now to the Wellness.
Discussion, so now if we move.
All those in favor? Speaker Alex. Okay, and then next we wanted to discuss the patients.
Yeah, so all, thank you. Although the sub, the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee did not meet. Last meeting I left with the impression the school committee wanted me to come back with a couple of motions of what I'd like to see happen around communications. So the motions that I'm about to make are relevant in the policy manual around our operations and procedures that we should provide adequate and direct means for keeping local citizenry informed about schools. That we should facilitate, encourage involvement, dialogue, encourage involvement in district programs and create community advocacy for our schools in section K A, School and Community Relations. And also provide timely and appropriate information to all stakeholders in our community, which is under fiscal management. Motion one is about charging the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee with creating a roadmap for this body to advocate for our public schools by communicating with all of our stakeholders. One of our most important roles as school committee members. Motion two is a small step that would allow this committee to, committee to immediately generate written communications that include topics such as meeting summaries, future meeting agendas, district initiatives, budget development, and student life. The specific tasks in the motion are designated to an individual me for now. And I, in my mind, motion two, the task of motion to the written communication could be enveloped in the communications plan that is made possible by motion one in the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee. So first motion, so you want me to just do motion one and then discuss? So I move that the school committee officially charge the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee with the task of generating a communications plan for approval by the General School Committee.
Any discussion or questions?
So I, I, I want to support the direction that we're headed. And I want to clarify that what I say about this motion may not impact the next, so. It's your, I leave those separate. I would be hesitant to support giving a charge to the committee to create a communications plan without putting it in context first. I would, I would rather see us at the next meeting take, take the actual list of all the things that we have to accomplish this year and things we want to accomplish this year, prioritize them together as a subcommittee. As, you know, as a subcommittee, and then bring that to the body for approval and, or for discussion and ultimate approval. Noting that if we get it, if we agree to set this charge right now, it removes our ability to triage things that may technically need to take more of our time. And I'm not suggesting that it shouldn't be part of that, but I think we need to have any context. That's my.
How does, how does it remove our school committee ability to keep?
We have a limit, we need once enough. So what all I'm saying is, if we're charged with this task, then we have an authority and do that task. To me, I feel that that's like.
Oh, the subcommittee?
Yes.
Gotcha.
So. Yeah, so I would rather we have a big picture plan of what we need to accomplish as a subcommittee for the year and that should include this, that we, that we prioritize that and then come to the committee with, this is the priority that we see. We see communication, this is right here on this list of policy work, policy and advocacy work that we have. So we don't support the effort, but I, I think it's just, we're one step away from my support of that.
But we need the, in order for that work to even take place in the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee, we need to, this body, it's my impression. This body needs to give direction to that Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee to even consider that action and that charge as part, in the context of, as you're describing, all the other tasks that that subcommittee needs to work on. So by, if we don't approve this, is communi, is communications is something we can even work on enough? I was, because I was trying to last meeting.
Chicken and egg, I did, I can see it, I can see it, I see. Chicken and egg, I did, I can see it, I see the chicken and egg of it. Then, then might I suggest we consider a slight change of language to say, include, just a slight change of language to clarify that it doesn't necessarily become the top or first priority, but that it can be considered in the work that we do.
So, so here's, I, I appreciate what, I appreciate what you're saying, Theresa, but I think we as a whole committee have been working to create a prioritized list for years now.
We've had one.
Okay, but I'm, I'm not sure that we want to wait multiple more months to, to create that. Because communication is going to be very important this year.
Mm-hmm.
And so, to me, all this is doing is saying, you know, put communications plan development on your list. How you all prioritize it within subcommittees up to you all, right? That's why you all are doing it.
If that's the, if that's how everyone understands the reading of that motion, maybe I'm mishearing it. I, I would take that motion and say, this is a charge that we have been told by the committee, we need to do this thing.
I mean, in the context of, there's two other, I think, three other charges in our draft document of the charges. So those charges, in my mind, just to provide reassurance, totally hear your points.
Yep.
And in my mind, those other charges don't go away.
Yep.
This simply clarifies the charge around communications.
Yeah, I understand, I just, that's where I'm coming from, and I don't vote in favor of this.
My one comment is, um, you know, like just say, generate a communications plan, this goes for nation of what we need. Something, is there a way we can be a little bit more specific about what we mean? Whether it's a communications plan, and possibly a revision between the small committee and the public.
You can, that's why we want to send it to the subcommittee, so they can help define that, we don't have to do it as a whole committee.
Or then maybe.
Like, I have some ideas, but.
Define and generate, or something, you know what I mean? Because I, you got it, it seems like such a general statement.
To define and generate communications plan, uh, communications.
Yeah, because I, I think we need to come up with, okay, and, because I read your email as a whole, right? And then the email provided for. So I would propose for the motion to do a little bit of that. Because I, I think what you're talking about is a communications plan that allows the school committee to communicate with
Right, to have a, have a well, I wanted, I wanted to.
I'm not gonna define it, but.
I wanted to leave it vague, because I know that there are people that are on the committee that are gonna have, on the subcommittee also, that are gonna have opinions about what the communications plan actually looks like. So I wanted to, through this motion, open the door to that conversation within that subcommittee without people feeling like they're nailed down or limited by the motion that, um, if it looks like one thing, great. If it looks like three things, great. And I have ideas as to what those things could be, but other people may as well. And this motion, in my mind, allows for that conversation to happen in a subcommittee, so that it's not taking up the time of this larger body.
Here's how I see the issue. And I'm gonna jump the agenda a little bit here, because, you know, part of our challenge is that we have sinning ourselves in communication, in other words, we've limited ourselves on how we communicate often with the, with public. And so we've ended up relying a lot on Pam to centralize stuff out. And as factual as Pam has worked to keep it, clearly being the main communicator has put her in a awkward role of, of sometimes being perceived as, as advocacy. So I think what this does is helps us work through what it means to communicate appropriately as school committee members, not as staff, but as school committee members. And we need the subcommittee to help us, to take the time to help us do that. And we can't do that as all the school committee at times.
I fully agree, and in fact, um, I, I, I'm a little concerned about the language of that last comment in bridging things here, but, but going through some things, I also have some concerns about us taking on advocacy at all. Because looking at the ethics, um, advisory, uh, guidance that, that I would call in for a different agenda item, it specifically talks about school committees should only provide factual information and not engage in advocacy when you're talking about uh, ballot questions or election, so.
I'm not talking about that, ballot questions or elections, I'm talking about agendas. But I did list specific things.
I hear what you're saying, but what Jay's talking about is a broader context of communicating with the public.
Yes.
And we brought this work.
To accomplish.
Exactly. We're bringing this word advocacy, so, again, I just want to be clear, I'm not against the idea. I, communication was something we cared about since day one. I'm just in favor of doing this in a different order, but again, it's not, because I don't think we need to communicate well.
The Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee could decide to change the name to Policy and Communications. And I'm actually in favor of calling it Communications and not Advocacy, necessarily because I think by communicating openly about what's going on in our bodies, that, that is in some, in doing our job to do that as laid out in our policy manual. But that in some ways is advocacy, because we're showing up in our community and we're articulating the work that we're doing. And it's in context, in the political context, and the context of our communities, and the context of student life.
So can I move the question?
Yep.
Move the question.
Second.
Alright, so, first motion.
The first motion is, do you want me to read it again?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
This is the motion on the table, right?
The motion on the table, right.
Correct.
I lost, I already have.
I moved that the school committee, I didn't, I'm not adding, if you want me to add define, I can't. I moved that the school committee officially charged.
Yeah, we have to.
You know, you can't, you have to stick with the motion that's already on the table, or vote to amend the motion.
Right.
Would you like to vote?
Wait, we need to, we need to move.
Vote on move. Sorry, so we need, I need to read it as was written?
No, we need to move to question.
Oh, you need to vote on that move. Sorry, newbie.
Okay, all those in favor?
Moving the question. So now we remind us what the motion says, as proven.
As originally written, oh. I move that the school committee officially charts the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee with the task of generating a communications plan for approval by the general school committee.
Okay, all those in favor? All those not in? Okay, that passes.
We'll do it.
The second motion is not deemed, right? Or?
No, in my opinion, the second motion is needed.
Alright, that's what I was.
Um, because while it may become move, and we can deal with that at a later date, it might fall under the work allowed in motion one.
Oh.
I'd like to see motion two move forward so that work can start. And so that, um,
Okay.
That would be part of discussion, okay, so I'll read the motion, then tell you my rationale.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion two, I move that the school committee issue a monthly written communication that contains A, a monthly recap of previous meetings, and B, announcements of agendas for future meetings using the following process. Great. One, at the end of each month, a draft will be generated by an individual designated member of the school committee in partnership with a superintendent. I'm volunteering, my Lindsay Taurus thanks, will be designated by the school committee to generate this draft in partnership with the superintendent for the 2025-2026 school year ending in July of 2026. The draft will be presented in the minutes to the full committee in the first business meeting of the month to be approved as an official written communication. This written communication will be disseminated once per month via local print media, official district social media channels, with comments turned off into an email list that anyone in the community can opt into.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I think this is a great first step, and that needs to break, so.
And Wendy, just to be clear, you're talking about factual communications that are summaries of our activities and actions. And so therefore, when we send it out, the official district social media channels, Pam is functionally just already factual summaries, in fact.
Correct, um, base, it would be basically a condensed version of the minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to confirm that and have that articulate.
Yeah, I think tend to, like, flip notes for our meeting, the track, so, again, make sure that, uh, you know, any of our stakeholders are aware of all the meetings that we have, you know, throughout the year, and not just the key ones.
Yeah, I still want the Pam in a position to be in charge of sending things out that aren't fact.
Well, I don't want to put us in a position to be sending things out that aren't fact, and this is a.
And I think as we go through it, I'll give you, I don't have a very lengthy summary, but the key variable is ballot initiative versus anything else, in terms of what is considered to be. Um.
I'm not worried about that at all.
Problematic, okay.
What I wondered is if, I don't know when the subcommittee is meeting again. Um, but I would love to have just a line of, this is the format, or this is an example of what it looks like, before saying yes, towards one.
Yeah, I think that, well, you're saying at, in the subcommittee level, or?
Or however makes the most sense, that occurred to me as one way, but I think over to others back before the saying, yes, it's going, I do it, I'd like to know what's specific.
Well, so what'll happen is that it'll be put together, presented here, we all approve it, and then, you know, you send it out, so. A different choice.
You'd be able to preview it in, with the minute, like the way you preview the minutes, it would go out almost part of the minutes. And so you would, and then you could be.
Come out as part of the agenda.
Yeah.
So we might have discussion like any other, right? And, uh, not as specific.
Um, I would just like to, to comment in this that, that I am supporting this, and I would just encourage we need to be rewriting and put, keep a couple of things in mind, and past when we've done these sorts of things. Um, I know that our, our partners at the newspapers are very generous with their, uh, limited space, but they are not community voting boards, and so we cannot have an expectation that they are going to want to print a monthly update for us, so it may turn out to be a letter to the editor kind of situation, but that's fine. Um, and the other thing that I would keep in mind is, when we say abbreviate minutes, I, I'm hoping that this would be very just, but, but, but consistent. Um, because I think it is worse for us to start something like this and not consistently do it, than to not do.
Yeah, the model I sent that Wellesley Public Schools uses, that was much longer than I anticipated hours being, um, but I think that the type of fact-based information and like summary of the meeting and the work that the committee is doing is, is captured there, but I agree with you entirely that the point of it is that it's free.
Any other questions, uh? Discussion. Alright, so we will take votes, all those in favor? See you, Alex. Thank you. And thank you, Lindsay, for putting the work together to present this, I would all really appreciate.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Chris, could I bring up one point that's policy-related, or if you'd rather I write it as well?
Oh.
It worked?
Yeah, none of the policy.
So, um, I, I sent a flag to our policy subcommittee members, um, when someone, a couple weeks ago, when the articles came out about teachers being put on leave for personal social media comments. Um, I just wanted, I just wanted to kind of confirm that our policy can't really be used that way. Uh, because, you know, the news article cited, you know, superintendent saying, based on our policy, we're putting them on leave. And, um, you know, I don't know if we need to look at it, I personally went back and looked at our new technology language and felt comfortable with it. And I actually feel it's better than our old language, or old language had, like, language like, you know, personal and professional gets blurry, we got rid of all that kind of language, so I think we're actually in a better position. Um, but I do want to note, we also did in, in adopting that, those technology policies, we did delegate some of the articulation of, of expectations to the superintendent. So, um, you know, while I think our policy, uh, hopefully cannot be used in that way, because, you know, every, every employee should be able to express their own opinion about non-school related things on their own time and their own social media. Um, I just, I just wanted to kind of flag that for everybody, that, you know, that was one thing I was looking at, I feel comfortable where we are, I don't know Pam wants to say anything, but um, if, if we feel that it needs more investigation, it certainly seems like the time to do it, if we need to pursue it, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to raise the issue and make sure we all feel comfortable.
My comment to that is that I'm, I'm good with, we were in depth with that, all those policies, all the pages, all of my eyeballs. Um, but I wonder if Pam could speak to this, because there are some places where policy versus contract versus law, like, there, there are some concern that, that, I, I'm good with our policy, but is this something?
And that's all we have authority over, right?
Yeah.
You know, if somebody commits a crime, that's a different story, right?
Yes. That's, that's all I tried, that's all I articulated in the question, when it was raised, and I don't I don't know what specific policies or procedures they're referring to, or if that's just a statement that was made, or how it was laid by the newspaper, because, you know, sometimes I get a little involved too. But no, you can't do anything constrict someone's First Amendment rights, and that may ultimately protect anyone. But in the role that they're in, things that edge on advocacy of violence, argument to children, even people's personal decisions in their lives and how that can play out in courts or, it's, yeah, could have impact on their employability, so. I think it's a, it's very black and white in terms of First Amendment, until there's violence or threat to the disorder of the building, which will become gray and conditional on any particular event. Which is probably not happening. But yes, people can have political lives outside of this. It's a whole thing.
Alright, um, the negotiation team did not meet, so we will move on to the subsequent support.
I try to shoot this as quickly as possible, because I feel bad for the folks, um, waiting to come on. So just a quick note, we've got a subsequent coffee coming up on October 23rd. Um, it's at eight thirty in the morning, and, uh, if you're not able to make it to the, uh, community meeting tomorrow night, and you have questions about the Essex Building Project, this is a great place to come, we can also talk about, um, all the other great things that are going on in the district of this falls, things like the improvement plan, um, questions about competency determination, we both have made our decision, but we can answer any questions that you might have, um, and bring your questions, it's not us speaking to you, it's us actually, um, responding to questions if you might have suggestions or concerns that you'd like to bring up, so, I hope you'll think of joining us. Uh, very quick report to, well, not very quick report, but I think, um, I can get through it in a timely way. Just want to note that MPAS student score reports will be going out, I think, in the mail tomorrow. Uh, and we have received our accountability data. Uh, so in addition to the scores that will come out from, the student score reports that will come from the school through snail mail, you should see, uh, the email if you're a parent or family member, uh, or guardian from Heather's office, that's opposite uh, curriculum instructional technology, just with a brief overview of what it is, can read your document, and whether there are some online resources to assist you, and our annual assessment review is coming up on November 4th. And that's what we're looking into, the accountability data, and that's kind of the summary, the, the annual summary of how we're performing against last year, against trends, and, um, what do we see our strengths, where do we see areas for growth, and what's our game plan uh, for the remainder of the year, and if you were to approach it. Um, Dawn, thank you for being, being patient and waiting until we got to this point in the agenda, but the full donation was, um, a topic that we wanted to report on tonight, I've been working with Kate, Ann Michelle, and Teresa before that, and really kind of trying to chase this down, um, from a couple of different points of inquiry over the past couple of years. Uh, that was Dawn, actually, your comment at town meeting last year that gave me aha, an aha moment of where to go to look again. And Michelle has been, uh, super helpful in being able to kind of go through and, and dig through the financial records, so. I think what we can report is the full donation did come in, the letter went out, um, at the time it was received. From our research, we found that it actually got initiated back in 2002 or 2003. Um, under a whole different set of people, we finally received it, um, but I don't think we quite knew what it was when we, when we got it. And it was deposited or still keeping, um, in what we call the gift account, so it's been sitting there. Um, and I had spoken with Kate to let her know that it's we don't know how to administer it, and we had no point of contact to discuss what to do with it, so it just got put away, shaving, I don't know, financially, can't, accounting of it.
Yes, so, I just want to add that we do have, um, do have a copy of the check, we have acknowledgements of the check, we have the full funds set aside. Um, if we do figure out what we want to do with it, we will gladly disperse it along with the interest, um. It, the holdup is really, we don't administer scholarship funds whatsoever. We don't do anything with scholarships here, we have an organization that handles them on the side of the school. So we received this letter from the attorney in 2015, basically saying, this is for a scholarship for teachers. No other direction, no contacts, no anything. So we have consulted with our legal. No other direction, no contacts, no anything. So we have consulted with our legal. Legal counsel and she said basically we need some direction in terms of where to go.
So happy to work with Dawn. If she, if you do have documents and you are going to be the scholarship administrator, we're happy to. I can give you what I have.
Okay.
These are from the lawyer.
Is that the same, the same documents that you've sent?
Yep.
Me and Kate. So we have all of it. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and then we just need to figure out how. How to disperse the funds or we can contact Council of Charles, what the proper channels are. Dispersing them to whoever's having the custodian of the scholarship.
Are you open to to conversation of our questions about this?
Sure.
Are you open to?
We'll do the best we can.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. On your territory. Well, I guess what I'm wondering is it was a good deed.
Absolutely.
It took about, you know, thirteen years in probate and then. Landed, right? And now it's been another ten years and and understanding the debate needs to be dealt with. But knowing that our district doesn't deal with scholarships, maybe it's something that we could talk to Dawn as custodian or whomever to see if. See if this could be transferred to the group that actually does administer scholarships.
Conversation with Kate, I don't know if she's in a position to jump in. What we had said, when we had investigated. Can it be turned back to the estate is no estate. Our attorneys tried to track down somebody we could. We had literally just no idea that. Dawn was was set up to receive the scholarship fund. So we can easily work with her in. Any fund that they've established to have funds transferred in an appropriate way. We can paper it all through the school committee. But I'm going to see if you've got, you know, that in some.
I think maybe I'm here. We, what I'm hearing is that Dawn want, that that the custodians would like to see this utilized for the good likes. So not necessarily the, the want it transferred back.
We don't oversee scholarship distribution.
Right.
So we need to transfer it to a scholarship. Will without the guideline criteria by which people can apply and receive. So we have not. We aren't worthy willing to work with whoever wants to take that on. And come up with all, all the right rules and regulations necessary to transfer the funds to someone who can. Fulfill obligations.
So it could potentially be something that they set up to accomplish that, or it could potentially be. The scholarship organization that does administer scholarships for us if that's what they wish. There are options and but it's just. This is going to go somewhere.
Can I ask, is there a scholarship in place for teachers already to advance their degrees?
There's a contractual, so if you're a young teacher or a teacher new to education who has a bachelor's degree and you're pursuing your masters. You get an annual reimbursement of. The cost of a state college tuition for a master's course. So.
And that comes from.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
But it's not a scholarship fund.
Right.
That's what I was asking if there was something already established.
What, what is the organization that, that Teresa keeps referring to?
Manchester Essex.
Yes.
That's who I'm referring to. Manchester Essex Education Fund. They administer lots of scholarships, but I'm not sure if they have any that are. They're all student scholarships, but it doesn't mean they might, they might be willing to.
Work with you.
Work with you to accomplish that.
Well, we also have the Friends of E E S who administer grants to our teachers.
We have, I have not been able to sit down with Sue up and I'm going to sit down with her on Friday. To go over this, that was one of the reasons I had talked to Kate, Teresa and just to try and get some sense of. Where we're going.
And I remember talking to Sue. I mean, this has been floating around and no. And I'll apologize for not being able to put my finger on it or really know what the genesis of it was. We've reached out to. Like Kukuru and Kukuru reached out to Sue party. So there's been a good faith effort to try to track down what the intention was. So whatever we can do to help you make good on what your wishes were, we're at the ready for that. And it's just, it's sitting there in an account and. Interest that can be applied for certain. But we didn't know what to look for.
And I, I, and I, like I said, I had family commitments that prevented me from just now being able to really sit down and. Try and drive the process to get.
So it sounds like this is something where. You can communicate with Pam or, you know, communicate with whoever you need to to get it through.
We're going to bring it back to the committee and work for final.
Alright, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then back to what we started talking about, which was communications and a campaign finance complaint that was registered last. Spring regarding communication that I did put out ahead of the Essex election. So. Just to give people a point of reference, if you, you may recall seeing this, it was posted on our website, it was posted on the superintendent's blog. And it went out as an email version used with our Blackwood distribution list. So to all, all the households that we know. So. Ahead of the election, I put out a note that said there was one more step in the process for budget approval. It was, the concern was raised that this was a violation of campaign finance and that we were advocating and using school resources to do so. The intent of the communication truly was just to let everyone know, having, having been told many times that people are not clear on all of the steps in our process. And this does pull right from the language you've been using in F A Qs, et cetera. But nonetheless, it went out and. When the question was raised and I was able to speak with the Office of Campaign Finance, they found that. While we were attempting to communicate factual information, there were two things at issue. We used our distribution list to parent. So it's a closed list. It isn't just a. A public flyer. That could have been problematic too, but we used a school based resource. To communicate to a specific audience about the vote and that some of the wording, while. From my perception was neutral, clearly could be interpreted as not being neutral. Because there's a thank you in there and there's a, a request for, not a request, but a mention of approval. That it does constitute a technical violation of. Maintaining neutrality and advocacy. So really, the whole thing was a collaborative process through the summer. I had a couple of different conversations with our rep. At campaign finance, I shared materials with her that we use. I shared older materials that we use that were some. That was kind of the template or the concept behind it. And they were very. They were helpful. They pointed out where we. Should be mindful in the future and really just encourage us to send things to them. If there's ever a question or just to get a second opinion, because sometimes they'll see things that we won't. And that, you know, you know, be always the easiest set of rules to interpret. The one thing she did mention to me was M G L fifty three eighteen B, which gives towns. The ability to publish things like the red booklet, booklet, like if you get it from the state or like I don't even read books. We sometimes get a voter mailer. That just tells you about about all the valid initiatives and the pros and the cons. That would have given us an opportunity to put out information about neutral information about the ballot, but use resources to do it. So what we were uncertain of is. If we as a regional district could pass it for ourselves. So if that's something you would like to pursue, you can certainly reach out to council and see. If there's any avenue for that there. But I think, you know, from my perspective. Good timing is probably the wrong phrase, but good to know this, knowing that we have some major. Work coming up around the building project and now we have a ready to go resource. For con, for consult on anything that we are looking to put out. I think this is something that not only Manchester Essex has dealt with, but some other communities as well because they did receive. MSBA is hosting a superintendent's roundtable for communicating around building project initiatives. So I think it's something that. Right now in the day and age, people are very mindful and. About what's going out and we should be equally mindful about what we're putting out there and get prepared. So we'll. Be consulting a lot with people going forward as we approach the building project. So happy to take questions. But I think from their perspective, it was, it's a close matter.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing then is a strategy moving forward is, is making advantage of their. Services to review and then provide feedback on the future communications.
Probably not, probably avoid. We can talk about strategy. We want to just avoid things going out ahead of a valid initiative altogether.
But it's tricky.
I don't think we can avoid it.
Well, and that's because I remember very clearly people were. Hoping you would do more and send more and you were very cautious in this, so that there's, there's some bounds there. So I think that. Opportunity to take advantage of that offer. We're gonna have to. Can I ask a clarifying question? Any cost associated with that offer?
No.
No cost associated with that offer. So no, is it freely?
In that is seen here, but part of our responsibility was to file an estimate of what it costs us in adding resource. So. I asked Michelle to do that objectively and she tries to now based on if we have to just. The three hundred dollars is estimated to be.
To clarify, there were no fines associated with this outcome?
None.
So. We have a learning opportunity. Which is great. That is giving us another resource moving forward. To continue the work. So I will just take the opportunity for a moment to say. I'm a rule follower by nature to a fault. And I appreciate when people are watching and paying attention and I, I appreciate it more when they let us know early on in the process. I took a look back through my. Through all of my communications from that time period, how this went. It was like four o'clock on election day when we were finding this out. But what I wanted to ponder in this, before this conversation was how the response happened and. Going back to my communications, I had a response from, we all, I think, did have response from you saying, here's what I'm doing and I moved to COVID N and. And whatnot before we even had an official response from the committee to. The letter writer. So. Knowing that we have, you, you took.
I did not.
Originally.
Way back maybe.
In May. That's what I mean. Yeah. That was long ago, May twelve. But just knowing that, that we have, we're taking the opportunity to learn. We now know these rules exist and we have a resource that's not going to cost us more money. For avoiding this in future, especially since we have the E E S bill. I'm confident with that outcome.
Any thoughts?
No, I had Essex elementary size, but I think we covered it. In case anyone now we haven't.
Alright, so moving on to our continued business and what was you about to start? Who needs to leave early?
I'll just say as we're transitioning, I had made a note to you and it's on the agenda that I had intended to have the class size and section in for tonight. Was having a good chuckle with. June that when I went to open it up, I was working on it in the morning. I went to open it up to send to you guys last night. There were, there's data missing. I had opened it all with file, but anyway, long story short, we'll have it on the twenty first, but I went into slight panic over shared files and who did what and. It was all me.
We want to make sure it's accurate. So we'll hold off until next again. So start with our C pack report.
We don't have a C pack report in person and I didn't receive anything in writing, so we can.
So then next is our curriculum and instructional technology up there.
Pam, he was waiting, so if other people want to jump in.
So then next we have our middle high school improvement plan.
So Betty is joining us remotely.
Okay.
So we can kick it over to Betty.
Betty, alright, great. Hi Betty, thank you for joining us. You're on mute, so I think we, do we need to take her off mute or can she do that?
She should be able to, but who knows with this thing.
Hold on one second. That top right side, if you click that again, not give them. Elements muted right there.
It's sending a request on mute.
Alright, so yeah, Betty, you need to unmute on your end. On the Zoom. Sorry. Maybe if you log out and log back in.
Get jumped in.
Yeah, why don't we go in person and I will, I will work on solving this problem behind the scene.
Alright, so moving on. Is that with you or?
Yes, she is. Well, these are, I was going to do my summary of the, my school improvement plan, but then we can go right into the. New first behavior analysis, if you'd like. Let's move right on in. So we're still working off the school improvement plan that I inherited from when I started. Just a couple of years ago, if you can move it. It seems like we've been together for so long. Strategic initiative one, I just wanted to touch on some of the things we did throughout the year. Strategic initiative one. We identifying and implementing opportunities for interdisciplinary learning and assessment. So we did last year a school wide professional development. And spent the year letting, giving the teachers the, the time and the resources to come up with various interdisciplinary lessons. This was one of my favorite things we, they presented in, at the end of the year, everything they had done and. I linked a couple of examples in the presentation I gave you, but the, the product that some of the, the teachers came up with was really outstanding. One of them was photo and web design.
Do you also want to share?
Yeah, I don't.
I think they're busy trying to unmute.
I think I'm unmuted.
You are, we're going to mute you for a second though.
Okay.
All right, projector. Oh, I can?
You're logged.
Could you join me? I will, as I'm talking, I can do that. So the photo and.
Pam will put you on.
Photo and web design. Class in particular. Merge together and they worked on the web design class, worked on creating an app. That would support showcasing the foot, the photos and the students in the photography class had their assignment based on, you know, doing different. Styles of photography. And as a matter of fact, I think Maggie was in that class. I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say about that.
Oh, it was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it. I got to put up pictures of my cat.
There you go. And you weren't necessarily in both classes. You didn't have to be. So that's kind of what we're trying to do is you don't necessarily need to be in both these classes. To kind of work and learn from another teacher. Another example I brought up was a drawing to learn class, which was the art. Tamara Burns, the art teacher with the ACE program and showcasing and having, so that's the bottom right photo. So having the students. Study different styles of art, but also just using drawing as a way to showcase what they've learned. And it was a really successful, that was a really successful project. Math and science. Created an escape room that could be a culminating activity at the end of the year. It was called Go Big and Go Home. For the last few days of school. There was a good S E L combined. Effort between English and the special ed and one of the counselors. The math and art and psychology teachers talked about the golden ratio and how that relates to. Math and art, but also, you know, psychology and things that are supposed to be more attractive or appealing based on the golden ratio. So it was really great. And it was something I wanted to just showcase and highlight and hopefully moving forward, we'll continue with. Some version of kind of just giving the teachers the time and space to explore more interdisciplinary lessons. Next, we have strategic initiative two. So understanding S E L and trauma informed practices, that'd be the next slide. Okay, I, should I? There we go. Thanks. We've been looking at specific professional development for the counselors, which we'll kind of talk about. With the Y R V S survey, which was conducted, it's just helping inform their practice and. Look at specific professional development that will be not only just for counselors, because oftentimes a lot of it is just very general. It's not. For our niche group of teachers and, and support staff, but also. What do, what does this school need? So the survey is going to help inform that as we go down the line with. With what we'll need for professional development. In terms of, well, improved attendance, I want to give a big shout out to the dean of students, Ms. Drake Warner. Who is on top of attendance and tardies and we've done a lot of communication with families. And we've done a lot of communication with families and explanation with families. And, you know, when the, when, when the email goes out that maybe a student has received has been tardy too many times. It's really just the starting point of a conversation, right? We wanted, we want the the community to know that we want your students here, right? We want you here and we miss you when you're not here. And it really is. Liz has done a great job looking at this from a lens of building community and building relationship and not from a punitive standpoint. So she can tell you, you know, on any given day, how many students are out. As a matter of fact, we only had three students out today, that was a big deal, so we we're definitely seeing.
Just today.
I know.
One yesterday.
Today was a good day, Tuesday is the most productive day in the whole school. Yeah, yeah. She knows, you know, if we have students that are critically retarded. We know what's going on and we're communicating with the family. And a lot of times when we do have students that are critically retarded, oftentimes there's a reason behind that. And so when we send out that letter or get that that communication that says your child's been tardy this many times, now there's a detention, it's starting the conversation, and she's done such a great job with that and made so so many great strides with the with the families because of that. We talked also about development, implementing faculty advisors. One of our goals was Ublock, we have Ublock, so why not maintain the same teacher? So we kind of piloted that and unanimously between the students and the staff, they love keeping their Ublock teacher. They just, I think because Ublock becomes, it's a constant in their day, it's a time for them. They use it, they get a lot of work done, but it's also a time for them to take a moment and just reset and get, get their head around what they need to do. And I think when they, they're getting used to go to the same room, it's just becoming like a pattern, right? I go here and it automatically kind of decompresses them instead of every year becoming something different. The ninth grade also, the teachers got together last year and we're working on defining what ninth grade Ublock means, and it's a little bit different than everybody else, right? They're coming from the middle school, they still need a little bit of help figuring out what do you have stuff to do? It's very easy to say I have nothing to do. So do you have things to do? And and we're limiting the phone in Ublock in ninth grade especially. And they can gradually then get to use it more and more as they, as they go down the line. But hopefully, what it does is they're working really hard to give some good study skills and just some good habits instilled in the students so that they are using Ublock in a productive way that works for them. So that was our initiative two. The third initiative, reviewing curriculum and and talking about underrepresented groups, promoting diversity, equity, inclusion and inclusion. For history and social science, they were able to get a genocide education grant. And so they used that grant in the last year to kind of get some professional development for genocide education and put in some supportive resources that are revising the curriculum to implement. This is of course coming from the state, so they were able to use that, utilize that grant. World Language is working on new standards, there's new standards from the state and they're building all, it's proficiency-based, so they've changed a lot of how they're approaching world language, how they're approaching speaking language culture and is kind of, it's centered throughout the whole curriculum, so that's really culture-centered. Our curriculum reviews that we're going through are building an equity lens, we're just teaching, you know, and and getting the teachers to think about how to build a curriculum with an equity lens and ensure that our routines and our instructional routines are free of any bias. And the students, because of that, have an access to a broader range of literature, broader range of curriculum, and it's ongoing. So that's a process that's completely, you know, always, always changing and always ongoing. But the teachers are really trying to put that lens on what they're teaching and every year kind of give, what, what can I change? What is going to be better for these students? What is going to be the the best possible curriculum I can provide for them? So that's kind of where we're at. So based on that, I was taught, I was, it's gonna be my first year really building a new school improvement plan, so what I would like to do is use my school council and give the year, and we're also in the developing stage of the district improvement plan. So because that's based off that, I'd like to spend my year in school council with my stakeholders, with the community members, with the parents, with the students, with the teachers and develop a school improvement plan based on the district improvement plan. So in the meantime, I came up with a bridge plan and I, an idea that would kind of maintain momentum while preparing our next school improvement plan with the district improvement plan, all these improvement plans, and just work closely also with school council. So we have a great school council, that is one of the most important things they're charged with. So I, I would like to spend the year kind of working on that with them. So I would like to focus this year on two areas, one being deepening instructional innovation and student voice, and one advancing curriculum review and alignment. There's a lot of work being done, as you, Heather talks about it all the time with, with what's going on at the high school with curriculum. So providing, get a little some checkpoints and goals surrounding that. So with deepening instruction innovation, establishing some more student feedback structures. So hearing what is landing with the students, keep looking at you, man, who are the student? What is landing well with students, what do they want more of? I mean, coming just based off of with the science curriculum review, one of the things we're hearing loud and clear is the students want marine biology. That's what they've been asking for, marine biology, and they've come to me and asked for that. So what other structures can we put in place that just allows students to give their feedback when they're ready to give that feedback? So a survey for the courses, you know, program of studies, what would you like to see following up on that feedback incorporated? Incorporating, I'd like to also incorporate further project-based design and service learning opportunities. Score, of course, is our big senior service learning opportunity, but how else can we tie that in? Looking at more project-based stuff, looking at service learning, it's not just senior year, it's not just civic action, it could be a lot of different things. And we have those two opportunities to provide some service learning, but I know we have students that are constantly coming up with these great ideas and these big, these big things they want to do. And so how can we support some of them in those endeavors? And then supporting the teachers in designing these opportunities so that the students are demonstrating their higher-order thinking, but what can I do for the, for the faculty so that they can, they have the time and resources to allow students to kind of think outside the box? And then with curriculum review and align, and alignment, continuing the curriculum reviews, paying attention to that vertical alignment and the alignment with our state standards, things are changing and we want to make sure we're aligning properly. But vertical alignment, six, twelve, K twelve is really important, so paying a little bit closer attention to that and making sure we're, we're all one solid unit and then building stronger instructional practices using formative and summative assessment data, using some time and professional development we have, so teachers can maybe develop common assessments or just more like stronger practices around them. What are you doing with that data once you get these formative and summative assessments? And integrating responsible A I practices, which is some of the professional development we have. So from the professional development website, I was, I found, you know, we're gonna have P D around A I tools for educators and also A I literacy for students. So making sure we have that in there as well, because that's a, it's a, I don't want to say controversial, but it elicits lots of feelings when we talk about A I in the concert, so that's my hope for a bridge plan. And that, and then building off of that with the district plan, we can, with school council, develop a solid school improvement plan to follow.
Yes, have you done any student survey on how students are using A I?
We have not done a survey on that just yet. It's a great idea to do, just see. It would, it would need to be anonymous, I believe, and you're gonna get some.
Like the survey that's been done on.
Right.
Emotional health, that's also in the materials.
Yep.
If you could do something like that, that's not a similar criteria applies.
Yeah.
But ask, what do they, what do they do?
Yeah. Yes, we do hear a lot from when students return, they go off to college, they return. A lot of comments we heard around A I was, my professor said, use it all you want, because what I'm teaching you in this class is not on A I. But you're gonna have to get real detailed and really think critically about what we're doing so that whatever you find in A I is gonna be a base level and you're not gonna be, I'm gonna know. And I don't, fine, use it to build your base level, but you need to use what you're doing in here. So it seems like colleges and universities are embracing it in that way, or there's always the great news, you know, there's memes all over the place about your future doctor is using A I to write his paper right now. So there, there, I think there's a little bit, it's a little different in college where it's like, I need to know when I'm, I've honed in and I have a major, this is what I want to do with my life. So there seems to be a little bit more intention of not using it to coast through, but it's a great idea to ask them how they're using it because they're, they're the experts beyond.
Yeah, because I, I think you can learn a lot by seeing what do they already do, right? It's out there.
Yeah.
I mean, I work for a company where we're being told to use it and maybe it was like, there's a ton of use of it, obviously, you know. To just say, no, you can't, it's a service.
Right.
But I also think it would be helpful for teachers to know what it's doing today.
Yeah, and our teachers have very, already, some of them have done a great job in, there's the spectrum of, I'm, I'm really, you know, I'm not sure about it yet. This, this professional development is going to be a great tool to help them maybe dip their toe to other teachers who are like, yeah, use it to help you study, this is a great way you can use it. Ask it some questions, have it for, you know, have it give you some study guide questions or use it to give you to do an outline of something. So we do have their range of people, of our comfort level, which is great. Because we also, the students have a range of their comfort level and and knowing what's, when is appropriate. So I think we're, we're dipping our toe in it for sure, but this year should be a great time to really learn more about it.
So, so I appreciate everything you're doing, I appreciate the context of using the year to build the new plan, you know, I'm with all the other plans. Part of what I hear in your void bridge plan here are a lot of different things, which may or may not be copier, depending on how they are implemented.
Right.
So for example, we have, we have in all the other plans, right, we have authentic learning, you talked about integrated learning. Also in here is project-based learning, service learning, authentic assessments, right? All, all these are pretty big things.
Right.
And so I, I hope you take, take the opportunity as you do that planning work to say, of these, which ones become central to our work? Because if you, if individual teachers go off and do project-based learning and some do service learning and some do this and some do that, then we, then we move away from our road to our coherence. So, so while I appreciate everything that's here, I also know that all these on their own are big.
Yeah.
And can serve as the central theme. So I just, I'm weary when I see so many in one place.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, so hopefully, your year of planning can help you narrow it and bring it together.
And I'm hoping maybe the year does draw a little bit of focus, so we can say, yes, there's a lot on that plate, but then we can look and say, you know what? We, it, this is really the best time to start focusing more on project-based learning, or you know what, it's not a great time to do project-based learning, but service learning seems to, the opportunities here seem to be bigger. So maybe this year will be, it would be nice if this was the year where we could kind of see, and then bringing the student feedback. If we're hearing from the students that they want service learning, or they're really interested in something that's service learning, that's gonna, that will definitely drop our decision-making process. It's a good point. Building on that, that, that's interesting feedback, because when I see that first point of the bridge plan, I actually see that in play, not just with my own student, but with other students in the upper classmen, juniors and seniors. And I see what they're doing and I see how they are looking for that more to connect it to what they're doing in school. And so I see that, maybe it's just my, the way I know some of these kids and I'm seeing how connecting that with the actual school structure is, is not such a huge stretch, I think. And I think it's actually maybe the best bridge we have toward what, what you do bring up pretty frequently is how do we get to authentic learning? We have students asking to learn based on these things, and I think that might be what brings us sort of toward that, so I really appreciate that.
I have a question. The Ublock focus.
I'm only gonna stick with the grade nine. So knowing that, that, that we have music classes that need during Ublock, I don't know, there are other classes that need during Ublock. And certainly, students made that choice to, to give up that time that they could be using for study or home classes in order to take those courses. But you talked about the kids in grade nine especially getting some instruction and study skills and that sort of thing. And also, those kids that are ninth graders that are in music classes now have a multi-grade Ublock. Met or.
Or, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, how is that working, or how do you see that work?
So Ublock is still, it's, maybe I misspoke a little bit, it's, it's not considered instructional, sorry, it's supervisory. So the, when the ninth grade teachers, what they were seeing last year was, I think, eighth grade, the phones are off and away. We, the phones are in the caddies in school, but they have them in their, their Ublock passing time at lunch. What they saw last year was they were jumping on the, I think, the phones big time. So they were on the phone, they weren't really structured. So we, it's, it's not so much as it's instruction as it was just a much more structured time for them. And it was, you can use them, phones are the first five minutes and the last five minutes. A lot, you know, we have time for the, during Ublock for the students to go to the cafeteria. And that's, it's, it's sometimes really hard to get back to the class, people get lost along the way, it's a big school. But just be the ninth grade teachers being a lot more cognizant and mindful of, you, you were gone and now you're back and now it's time to get working. So just a little bit more, just reminding students and, and there was, we had things on the wall that was like, did you check this? Did you check classroom, did you do this, did you do that? And kind of telling them to go through these steps before you're, you're telling me you have nothing to do. So just a little watching over by the time, and Maggie can say junior and senior year rolls around, it's very, they, they know what they're doing. They're, they're using it and they know exactly what they're gonna use it for, they have it planned a week in advance, so they know like this day I'm going to this teacher and this day I'm doing this, so.
And so those ninth graders are getting that because they're already in instruction.
Right, right. And sometimes with the band and chorus classes, because they're every, the structure can be every other day now, they still have, they can still visit Ublock every other day. So depending, sometimes they.
Some do, some don't.
Some do, some take even additional band and chorus classes, which is fantastic. But, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess I just had one quick thing too, it's actually more on A I as well. I, I just. This is probably not something for this year, but just in general. I continually just see and read a lot about A I in general is like a changing a lot of ways that we work and then also starting to replace a lot of entry-level jobs for kids coming out of college. So, you know, A I, I know we all talk about it, it's like, oh, I'm gonna use it to write, you know, whatever, to make my school work easier for me or to not have to do as much. There's gonna be negatives with everyone, but I think try to really focus on that and maybe even like, I, I don't know if the high school level is even appropriate to talk about having an A I class or maybe make it a part of, thinking about integrating or starting to integrate that. And I'm not an expert, so this is just a suggestion of what to have a discussion about it, you know, into the computer science curriculum more. You know, because, I mean, A I is replacing a lot of basic, just software development that's been done that too, right? So it's kind of, you know, changing that nature of this, so. Probably not, and it's happening extremely fast, right? So that's why I, you know. I'll throw my cues in there to, you know, to take a deeper look at and see how we can instruct along that.
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, I, you know, I read stuff about high school kids starting businesses all the time and how easy it is today because of the tools that are.
Yeah, and we have students that are doing that, it's a really good, it's a really good point, and I think if, I, I'm interested to see if we do student survey before the program of studies presentation, I wonder if we'll get some students saying, you know, I'd like to, I'd, I'd be interested in a class on that. And it's, it's good to point out, you know, you, it can, I can have it write my paper, but I can also have it give me a plan for a workout or I can get, have it give me a plan for, to, to develop a skill, I want to learn how to do this, what are the steps I would take? So maybe leaning that way too, you want to learn how to play the guitar, ask A I, what, what is the first thing?
Yeah, and just, and, and maybe even reach out outside of, you know, our teachers and maybe reach out to the community a little bit to see if someone has something input.
Yes, yeah. That seems to be, in, in school council in particular, we have, because I, I see parents and community members there. That gets brought up a lot in school council and, and I know there's community members that would, would jump at the chance to. Um, that gets brought up a lot in school council and, and I know there's community members that would, would jump at the chance to collaborate with the students and, and the faculty. So that's a great idea.
Yeah. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time, most.
I'm gonna stay here with Sam if you don't mind to help out.
Well, actually, I'm gonna have to go because YRVS is going to cover both the one high school circuit to get the, um, on the school improvement plan part. And I'll just say as we're transitioning to Betty, just a, a pitch for, I think with any technology, we're always chasing it. And by the time we catch up with it to institute a course work around it, it's going to be changed. But what's gonna, I think, what I know will become increasingly more important is that profile of the graduate and all of those interpersonal and soft skills that are about human interaction that are going to be really mission critical to counterbalancing the world that our case we're going into. So I think it's, we're in an interesting time of challenge around some of those topics. But I really think, um, that's why we might be a little bit ahead of the game in terms of power structure. So, but all the points about power.
I would encourage you.
And I think there's an opportunity to draw lineages with technology, digital, like all the things that are also part of the graduate. To bring the biggest value happen. In other words, what are the pitfalls? What are the dangers that students may not immediately realize? They may think it as all valid and yet we know that AI is capable of making up sources. So I need to make up the fence. So, so I think in the way of, yeah.
People are taking advantage of it.
And, yeah.
People don't really feel the worry.
Right.
I see that's where the worst.
I think it's fascinating and fascinating somewhat. Yeah, it is.
All right, Betty, are we ready to roll?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yo, hallelujah.
Sorry about that earlier, Betty.
That's all right. It's, it's probably me. Hello, everyone. Um, good evening. I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to be able to address you and say hi. And, um, before I start, I, I want to tell you that I'm having a really great time working at Manchester Essex Middle School. Um, everybody's been really supportive and the teachers and the kids have been great. Um, so the, the, the school improvement plan that I'm presenting is really a continuation of what Joanne Mano had been working on. Um, and really I, in, in consultation with Pam, I see my task is to move things forward, but not to make any kind of drastic changes because I, I need to make sure options are available for your new principal next year. So I'll talk a little bit of the things that we're maintaining and the, the next steps forward that we're, we're trying to make. Um, would I be able to share a slideshow?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Yep. All right. Um, that, that's if I hit the share button, correct?
You have it.
I, I have it. Um, and here it is. I think this should work.
We're good.
Okay. So let me get started. All right. So ta-da, there it is. So let's talk about a couple of things that, that, that in Joanne's plan have been completed and are done. Um, when she was working on creating, um, one of the strategies and for, uh, cultural promoting diversity, um, they, the, the school had gotten a grant and we had performances from the, uh, tourism group who, uh, did some performances, uh, regarding the Holocaust. That's been done. And there was work, um, on curriculum, particularly for grade sevens deer program, creating more diverse, uh, book choices. Uh, that has been done as well. And the middle school, um, I think has worked very hard and was clear to me when I came here had already implemented, um, ruler and that you can see it around the classroom. You can hear teachers talking about it. I want to give a particular shout out to the exploratory team because they really embed it right at the beginning of the year for kids. And, uh, the school has its charter and we refer to it consistently with our students. So those are some things in the plan that are completed. Things that are ongoing, uh, it goes without saying, curriculum review, which is a big piece of a lot of the initiatives is, um, also ongoing in that, um, with the assistance of the principal, but really, um, Heather Leonard and the, um, the department heads have been working hard on that. Again, we're going to continue reinforcing the ruler and SEL strategies. And I will have a specific next plan for that a little bit later in this presentation. Um, the schools worked very hard in creating multi-tiered systems of support. We have a very active and regularly meetings, uh, student support team. Plus with the work of the consultation of both counselors and the assist, and the dean of students on with the teams. There's really a lot of people talking about students and talking about the supports that students need. Continuation of using iReady assessment and a continuation, and this is very important, of data analysis to inform instruction. Um, done, we're going to be looking at iReady, we're going to be looking at MCAS. But the more important thing besides seeing the patterns or noting that the differences is what are our next steps? So we'll be talking about that. So for initiative one, uh, we're going to be taking a look at, um, a couple of different things. First of all, back to the data, we are going to take a look at, um, two thousand and twenty-five ELA. And we're going to continue with the implementation of targeted writing instruction and probably take a look at other areas in ELA. There has been some, some nice feedback on the MCAS regarding, um, ELA scores. And so we're going to examine a little heavily to see what our next steps worth are and what to reinforce. I also think it's important to take a look at MCAS in math and, and we begin to, begin to develop and implement math interventions. Uh, to start identifying, you know, where are the deficits or, or what do we need to target? And then what our next steps are. Under authentic learning, um, you know, it's interesting to me when, when I look at the definition of authentic learning and I've been in a couple of districts that talk about that. And I, I, I think, um, one of the school committee members talked about that when Julie was doing a presentation and talking about a lot of different teaching strategies such as project-based learning or inquiry-based learning or community service, um, or, uh, and, or even interdisciplinary learning. All those pieces for me come under the umbrella of authentic learning. And not one thing is better than another thing, but for what has to happen first is for teachers start talking about what is the most effective way to teach and how do we have the students doing the work? In other words, it's, what's really important about authentic learning is not only is it things that you're going to see later on in your life and, or situations and, um, that are happening to you now that you care about, but also the ability to take the next step, which is to do the research or to advocate or to write and, and make a comparison and contrast and, and create a coherent argument. All those things, there are different ways that teachers can do that. So what I really want to dig into this year and to leave the path open for the next principal is that we talk about what authentic learning is, um, by first looking at all the possibilities. And by that, I'm not saying that we're going to, uh, have, have everything all, um, done up nicely, but to talk about. What is authentic learning? How do we give students choice and voice? And what are the strategies we use for that? Do we do it through project-based learning? Do we do it through a research project? Um, I, I want to use professional learning communities where the teachers and groups begin to examine problems or take a look at some readings or to brainstorm some ideas. And so that's one of the things I'd like to do this year. And that will give your, your next principal some data and some, and some, um, beginning steps where they can choose which way they want to go next. For strategic initiative number two, we're going to continue with the ongoing SEL approaches within the teaching and learning environment. Two things we're going to particularly do so we advance, and that is sometime mid-year, December or January, when, as a staff, we're going to take an intensive look on where we're using SEL. Is it a regular practice? What do we think the effect is? And do we have another step we want to take? And I'd like to do some outreach to parents, making sure that they have an understanding of what we're doing with our SEL approaches, with our, um, with our ruler program, so that parents have some information about that. And then, um, for strategic initiative three, uh, we're talking about creating diversity. And, um, I, I think one of the things to do that is, you know, to build community. And I'd like to, um, take our student council and really talk and work to foster leadership skills with the students. And, and our student council is responsible for hosting some of our dances and a few drives. I, I want to talk about leadership skills with students and create some workshops. If I can get some, um, guest speakers to come in and do that, some activities where kids talk about, yeah, um, standing up for other people, uh, what's, what's the difference between being a, um, you know, a bystander and, um, and actually an upstander, talking about how we assess what our community needs and articulate and advocate for that. So I'd like to take that group of student council students, because it's voluntary, all kids, any students can join and build that capacity, which I think will really just encourage a lot of different diversity and a lot of skill. Um, I will work with, with Heather Leonard, the director of curriculum and department chairs to take a look at other aspects of our curriculum where we can build diverse resources. Um, and I think another thing about diversity is we, you know, we have students, um, who are on education plans and have different learning styles and learning abilities. And our staff spends a lot of time, um, juggling all the different needs of students and trying to understand the, um, the different strategies and the different supports that are needed. And they do a great job of that. But I think every now and then people need a review of what are the programs and resources that the school district offers, how, what are the process to tap into that? And so I, I'd like to plan a workshop to review some of those elements. Um, so those are, those are the three initiatives I'll, I'll be working on. Um, and, um, I guess I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Betty. Looks like we're good with questions.
I was, I was waiting.
Jake, I think you're getting cut from my job. Make some good.
Well, I don't know. I, I really only have one. Betty, good to meet you. Thank you for, uh, uh, taking the time to join us here today. And, uh, I know it's not an easy job to, uh, to fill this kind of transition. So thank you for representing the work done and, uh, where you want to, uh, go while leaving options open.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
My question or maybe comment more than question is, uh, around math. Um, I've, others are probably sick of me harping on this, but, um, we know we have some challenges in math that, you know, are not unique to middle school, but, uh, carry through middle school. Um, and I appreciate that you're going to be working on math interventions. My concern, only because I see it in so many other places, is that math interventions, when that becomes the focus, it can be viewed as the way to fix whatever program problems we have or whatever gaps students have. And while it's a critical piece, I don't want it to absolve us of having to look at our core instruction as well. Because the MTS system relies on a very strong and differentiated core instruction. And since it wasn't that long ago, my student and his classmates, my child and his classmates were in middle school, that definitely needs some work in, um, I don't, I don't want to lose that in, in terms of, in terms of moving mathematics forward. So I know intervention has to get some attention, but whatever you can do to also advance core instructional changes would be appreciated.
Well, uh, thank you. And, and I agree with you. And I, I, I guess I use interventions as a, a blanket word. And, and I see now that it was probably seemed much more specific. When, when I, when I said interventions, I do mean looking at the core curriculum as well as some, some short-term strategies um, in the moment to support, um, a particular class that might need some more support or that, you know, we identify standards that need more support. But, um, I guess I, I meant, I meant interventions, but I meant working with the district on, on solid curriculum as well.
Thanks for that.
Well, I'll, um, briefly, um, one of the things you, and it may have just been a, a language use, whatever, but about, um, coming up with some interventions. But I believe there have been some interventions in place and I just, I know how, how this works in perception. Uh, so I wonder if either you or Pam or someone could speak to what we've been doing that can be built upon very briefly.
Uh, was that in math or ELA?
Is what I'm specifically.
How are we currently structured for math intervention, Betty?
Um, well, at, at, right at this point in time, it, it's, it first starts with the team and their meeting. Um, they work with the special education liaisons if necessary. Um, they use the iReady data to identify where students are. Um, we, we're going to take a look at MCAS too, and in particular, look at the standards where we have some weaknesses. Um, I, 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 I am probably skipping some other steps since I'm still learning some of the things that we're doing. Um, but interventions right now, we do have, aside from special education, we do have the learning center that sometimes we refer students to. But one of the things we're working on in, um, in multi-tiered systems of support is to make sure that when we refer a student to the learning center, whether it's for math or ELA, that we have a very specific goal that is going to be worked on. So we can measure if this is, this has been helpful to students. So that's where I am at this point. I have a feeling, and I don't know Pam, I may have, um, missed some other things as well. Um, but it, it has a lot to do with the team conferencing and working with support people, both in special education um, and, and other capacities. I'm working with Heather to talk about what, what do math, what do math teams need to dig into in the data, which would be our next step.
I thought, uh, I'm deep to and I could share what was and where we're heading with this in collaboration as well. So, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betty.
I kind of want to add, I'm sorry, um, hi Betty, welcome. Um, thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering where, and maybe Heather's going to address this, but specifically around math and where vertical alignment lives in the transition from elementary to middle, specifically like sixth grade. Um, I, yeah. We're sorry.
About to do that another night, um, in another point in time. We're just not prepared to do that soon.
That's fair.
All right. Thank you, Betty.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next.
Yes.
RVS.
YRVS.
Um, first off, I'm Samantha Pandara. This is my, although this is my second year in this role, this is my first time addressing the school committee. So nice to meet, uh, all of you. Uh, so in April, we did our youth, youth risk behavior survey. Um, this is with the middle school, uh, seventh and eighth graders, the middle school and the high school. And it was a, uh, it is a voluntary, um, national survey done to just gather and anonymous, just to gather information about students, kind of where they are. Um, this information is then taken and we see how could we best service our students? What do we need to do as a district and as our respective schools in order to best support our students in accessing the curriculum as they move through and then as they enter on into their, you know, post-high school adventures, wherever kind of that may be. Um, we pulled out and in our presentation, we pulled out a couple, uh, highlights, but then at the bottom, I, we have all the information and data and historical data to compare nationally, um, as well as in the past few years that we've done the YRVS as well. Um, so every slide has the high school and the middle school separated. Uh, so this is who took the survey for us. Um, so we had, you know, a good, good representation as far as the high school, um, from who took the survey and then the middle school, since we only did grades seven and eight, uh, we had a, a large response there. Uh, this was, and we said it's been, was early April, so it's an interesting, we have to think about what time of year it is at the high school and the middle school. Um, when, when these surveys are getting put out. Uh, so this was the, the last week of third quarter for the high school. Um, and so some seniors were getting ready to go on internship, which that's something that they were doing. Um, the middle school, they were gearing up, you know, spring was, spring was starting. They were gearing up to, to enter into their, really the last piece of their middle school, eighth graders, their middle school career and seventh graders, the end of their year. Um, high schoolers did it during Ublock and middle schoolers did it during an academic block. We coordinated with teachers and had it done at the beginning of one of their blocks. And then we excused ourselves and they continued on with, with their lesson for that day.
Quick question real quick. I, I just noticed that there's less high school students in fourth grades than fifth grades in middle school.
Yeah.
Any, is that kind of normal?
Yes, I, um, you know, we, this was voluntary, although we asked all the students to do it. If a student had a calculus test they need to study for, we weren't going to force them to sit here to take this. Um, we had students opt out, students that were absent. Um, so we based it on the students that were in Ublock. If they were there to do it, that's what they sat to do. Middle school, I think they have a little more of a, little more control over in the. Middle school, I think they have a little more of a, a little more control over in the, in the classes of who's there. The seniors were in the building. We actually got the greatest response from the seniors of all students, considering they only had a handful of days left. But so that was our, and so that is something that Heather and I did talk about, that in a few years, when we would be forming this again, is there another time we should do this in order to get more high school input?
There's no stars.
Yep. U Block seemed to be the best option to where not to interrupt classroom time. But maybe it's not the best because it is a time like we talked about earlier, upperclassmen in particular, they're going to do other stuff that they have to do. So.
Maybe give them free candy.
One piece we pulled out was sleep. Sleep's a big thing that we, that our students, you know, they talk about. We see the energy drinks, the coffees, the, the different things rolling into our schools. But on average, you know, about three quarters of our high school students are getting seven or more hours of sleep. And that was, we were pretty happy to see that number. Expected it to be a little lower because the national average is, is lower than that. And then the middle schoolers, now over eighty percent are getting more than seven hours of sleep, of sleep per night. Now, this is, again, this is all anonymous. So when we see these, the four hours or less, the numbers on there, we don't know who that, who those students are. So we, but we know that just because we don't know who that is does not mean it's not something to pay attention to and use this information to inform how we, how we move forward as well. Social media, you know, we all talked a little bit earlier. We all groaned. It's, you know, it's wonderful in so many ways, but there are many drawbacks as well. So on average, our students are accessing it, the high school, almost fifty percent of the, of the students are on social media, social media multiple times a day. This question was not, are they on it during school? It was a general, are you on it during the day? They said, yes, they're on it multiple times. Same thing with the middle school, almost thirty-eight percent of our students saying they're accessing social media multiple times a day. Again, this was not, are you using it at school? It was in general throughout the twenty-four hour period. How often are you accessing social media? Substance abuse. So this was if a student has tried something at least one time. So, you know, we look at alcohol, since forty-five percent of our students have tried alcohol at least one time. Of our high school students and seven point seven percent of our middle school students said they have tried it at least one time. Cigarettes, seventeen point one percent of our high school students and four point seven percent of our middle school students. E-cigarettes, sixteen point five percent and three percent. This is one that we, that sparked when we were discussing it. I think it's gone down over the last couple of years. I think a couple of years ago, e-cigarettes were everywhere. I think we were finding them in back rooms and you could smell them around the school. And that's just not something we're seeing in our building as much anymore. So as much as it is a problem, we are seeing this trend, trend now, which is great. Marijuana, four point one percent of middle school students and twenty-four point four percent of our high school students say they have tried it at least once. Then prescription drugs, using them against the, against the, the instruction of a doctor. So four percent of our middle school students and one point three percent of our high school students said they have done this at least one time.
Do you think they understood that question? Because I was surprised by that figure for the score.
I think that's a great question. I think they don't always know what is prescription and what is not. You know, when their parents say, here's Tylenol, do they know what that is? Or do they know that just because that is not from the doctor, doesn't mean you shouldn't take it, your parents says you can. So I think that is a question that, that could be, could have been misinterpreted. Sure. Mental health? So we, this was asking the students in the last thirty days. So basically, the month of half, half of March and the first half of April, how, how often was your mental health not good? So eighty, for the high school, eighty-five point five percent of the time, students had never rarely or sometimes was their mental health not good. So that is a, that is a high number. We don't expect students to always be happy a hundred percent of the time. So eighty-five point five percent is a solid number for us, but knowing that we are looking to target that other fourteen and a half percent to see, see what's going on there. The middle school, eighty-nine point three percent of the students said they never rarely or sometimes have poor mental health. And so again, that is a high number, but also we are looking at that, you know, ninety-one point seven percent of students that, or ninety point seven percent of students that, nine, nine point seven percent of students that are, that are struggling, that are saying that they're struggling for this, that, or another reason. The survey does not share with us, what are they, you know, are they, is it home? Is it school? Is it something in between? They, it doesn't share that with us. So that's something that we're going to look in, look into to see what can we do to help, help those students. And I think overall, our, our numbers are great, but it's so easy to focus on the numbers that are, that are positive and not look at the smaller numbers. But the smaller numbers are some of our most struggling students, and those are who we also need, we really do need to focus on. And, and so that's, we're going to take this data, kind of inform our practices moving forward to, to see what we can do to help the community in a greater good. The rest of the presentation, I'm not going to go through. It's going to happen for you. So we've taken all the data and with the high school and the middle school. The high school did the YRVS twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two, and then again, this past spring. We also added the Massachusetts and National Data as well to compare. The Massachusetts data is from twenty twenty-one. One piece is twenty twenty-one is still pandemic. And for, you know, for not too far from the pandemic, so I would be interested to see when there's new updated mass data or new updated national data. Four years feels like a lot of time for, and a lot of time in our country for things to have changed post-pandemic and things like that. So middle school did not do the YRVS in twenty twenty-two, and there is not Massachusetts data on the CDC website. So we can only go on twenty eighteen with the last time the middle school did the YRVS. They did it this past spring. And the national data is from twenty twenty-one. The middle school national data, there's not as much. The high school, there's a lot. In the middle school, there is not. For most of these surveys, only thirteen states are represented in this national data, unless otherwise specified. There's a couple others where there's eleven states. So it's, as much as it's national, it's thirteen states or ten states in some regard. So the national data is a very small, a very small piece of the nation. Just keeping that, keeping that in perspective as well. Overall, you can kind of see that our, you know, our numbers are lower than the national average. You know, car-related behaviors, these were all questions that were asked on our YRVS. We did, we covered mental health, a little more in depth for our mental health. Smoking comparison, different types of smoking cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, cigars and e-cigarettes. And alcohol use. Marijuana in particular, we took a little bit deeper dive into that. Other drugs. Violence-related behavior on school. This was only, this, these questions were only asked nationally for, for the high schools, and then we only asked this of our high school students. And then mental health and sleep, we pulled out as well. And then bullying, bullying was the last piece that we pulled out. So this is data that we pulled out. We wanted to share it all for you, but the top four that we kind of discussed more in depth at the beginning were the ones that we pulled out for us to truly look at to inform our practice moving forward from professional development and so forth.
Yeah. Did you compile any survey results to the students?
We have not. We have just been compiling this now and assessing it. So we have not shared this with the students as of today.
Is there a plan to do so, or is this more, you know?
The plan, the plan is more to help us, help us help students. We have not discussed sharing those students. It's something we could definitely talk about. But it was more so a tool for us to inform our practice of the students.
We're going to share with students. I want to be a little, I want to be very mindful and intentional about how we roll out this information so that it's, it doesn't become something that is a deterrent to the learning and it becomes something that can help them learn. So we'd want to be thoughtful about if we were to do that, what's the best way to go about that?
What I mean with the kind of thing to get from that result.
No. I think a lot of very often, but also later students have asked about it, right? When they had a bit of the survey, did they ask, how is this going to be used?
I did not get any questions from that area. Nope.
Coming out of this, for you, looking at all the data, what's that top of mind for you as far as what we saw in the practical application?
Yeah, we pulled out definitely the, the mental health piece jumps out first to us. You know, our, our department is very much post-high school planning, but mental health combined. So we're looking to see, you know, that, you said that almost fifteen percent of students have said that most or often their, their mental health is poor. You know, what can we be implementing in the schools to, you know, reach them as a whole? We are already in the classroom multiple times a year, meeting with students. We have one-on-one meetings with all the ninth graders from now until November. We give ourselves a little bit of time to get them all, to give them that face time. What we don't want is the student to roll into Thanksgiving or, or whatever the holidays that they, that they celebrate, their families. Oh, if you met your school counselor, yeah, they're like, you have no idea what they're doing. You know, we don't want that. So we want, so we're working to develop those relationships. The biggest piece of all the literature I've read is if a student feels that they have a trust of doubt for someone that they can go to in a school, they're already going to feel more comfortable being there. So utilizing what we can there.
Thank you. All right. Great question. So did the, did either school alter or add any questions from the CDC survey?
No, questions were added to the CDC survey.
Were any from altered? Okay, some of us. Thank you. Question about the social media question on there. Again, this is Youth Risk Behavior Survey. You know, there are risks associated with social media, but there are also risks associated with screen time. The stuff of personal, and our pediatrician brought up with us this idea of social media and also if video games. Keeping that in mind, but there's not that horror layer. He wrote it down a little bit by gender. And so I'm just wondering, what, what are we doing with that information? We're just taking it in right now and because we don't have, we don't have demographic breakdowns on that already. Not real. Just don't. I don't think they have demographic breakdowns on that. What do you mean by what are we doing? So we have the information about use of, that people are using it a certain number of times a day. And so, because I guess where I'm going, I mean, that, that could be asked of any of these questions, but I have a couple of specifics. But that one, just in general, I mean, just knowing, knowing that the, the general idea of social media is not always a positive in everyone's life was partially what helped drive us to, to be a little bit more strict in terms of our, you know, we're on a straight phone band. But every class puts their phone in the phone caddies and we're, it's limited the use of it during the school day. So that's, you know, that's our small part. I mean, that this is twenty-four hours and we only have students with us for a certain amount of hours. So we've had, we have had some, the middle school has done a couple of evening presentations and, and offered things that with two parents and to the community about this is why social media might not be a great idea. This is why maybe you should be talking to your student more about it. We, it's, this is, like we said, we're starting to just kind of unpack all this and see where we are going. But I'm happy with our more stringent, you know, cell phone rules, knowing that during the day. And we're hearing it from parents. You know, they're coming in and saying, I'm dismissing my child. I texted them, but they're not answering me. So we know that the phone is annoying parents sometimes, but we know that, that it's working. So what else can we do when we're not, we're not there for the other hours in this day is just having more discussions with the students. The counseling team does a great job of that, just talking about what's appropriate in terms of like social media, what might not be, especially when they're working, students working with their adjustment counselor, talking about like, is this really, you know, you're, you're bringing this up. Is it really helping you out? Is it really making you happy? And just help, but the student has to get there on their own too. If we could just tell them what to do, things would be much different. So just empowering them and help, helping them realize and see the correlation between I'm feeling great all the time and maybe it's, maybe it's because I was on Instagram for two hours. I don't even know if Instagram is still cool. I'm probably calling the wrong app. I could go off on that bolt line.
Yeah. Oh, I will.
Okay. So then, just two other. I would just offer, I think it opens up district-wide a conversation that used tapping around bullying to a certain extent, which is structured and unstructured time for students. And we can continue to tighten during the day, the amount of accessibility they have, if we so choose. But we can't control the before and after. And we know, like when they're under the virtual eye, it can happen, but it happens less. So how do we open up a conversation? And then find a way to invite parents into that conversation about not preaching to them, but informing them about restricting it for six or seven hours during the day does nothing if there aren't equally, equally supportive structure. But I think that's going to be an interesting opportunity for us to investigate with these users. That, that leads nicely into my last couple of questions, which is of the, the look at a snapshot to see what students now are doing, but I also think that trends from a school committee perspective are equally, if not more important to, to guiding what's going to happen here in terms of any action. And so when I'm looking at the comps, you know, with the middle school, we missed the twenty twenty-two, and I can't remember why, but I, but we missed twenty twenty, twenty, speaking of twenty twenty-two. And when I look at the, the mental health, you know, considered suicide in the last twelve months in our middle schoolers. It's down, which is great. That's a good trend. But seven point seven percent is not a joke. And so then when I look at bullying and I see the drop has only been, you know, two point three percent in that same timeframe. I'm wondering, why are we not seeing a greater drop in bullying at school and electronically at the middle school level? And at some point, I mean, twenty-seven point seven, twenty-five, you know, nineteen and change, fifteen and change. What are we going to do in our practices? This isn't very necessary, but this, this is data we have. So something has got to move forward in terms of an action plan, not just seeing that it's the case. But on the flip side, the violence-related behavior, I remember when we talked about this three years ago, in particular, that last bullet, forced by a date to take part in sexual activity, who did not want to, had gone up by almost three percent from the previous. And now it's dropped down way down. So I'm contemplating this one. Did we graduate out a few classes that, where this was really a big problem? Were there some sort of interventions? Is this just a system of? So my question to you on this is, did we do anything? Did we implement something? Can we, can we say here was something that was effective and build on it? That's a question. It's hard for me to answer because I wasn't here for some of those years. I can't specific, I can't name anything, you know, specifically. I think there's been a lot of conversation, just, I mean, and, and it might even just be culturally, there's been a lot of conversation in public or, or out in the world about what consent means and talking more and having that conversation more. It's not been something that people are hiding behind as much. So maybe it has something to do with that, something to do with just, you know, things that they're watching, like what, whatever was popular in those days. But I think we're, we're talking a lot with the students and I'm, I'm thinking about Morgan's message, which isn't necessarily tied to this. But I think there's been more clubs and, and more opportunity for students to kind of learn and, and speak out and, and stand up for what is, what they believe is right. I think there, there's just a little bit more empowerment going on. I can't speak to anything specific. It's really, it's, it's very interesting. But as you guys take this data and review it and, and, and go through all of this, that's something to, to consider. Something is different. And the flip side, I'm disheartened not to see in the school improvement plan, this, some big something about bullying at the middle school. This, a quarter of our kids are being, are reporting self-reporting this. That's.
I think we're going to see some assessment numbers too, when we get together on November fifth and the vote we made of that. Does not necessarily fully align with the press.
So then, British question.
Then the question we come to have. How can we probe deeper? How do we have better understanding of what's going on?
Okay. But yeah, I guess as a follow-up after the twenty twenty-two survey, were there initiatives planned based on the results?
I think our entire SCL approach is based on developing better relationships between students to hit root causes of bullying behavior. So not the developing empathy, developing coping skills, developing reporting opportunities for kids. But I think it. Were you able to verify the number?
Bullying was in middle school. The high school was not anywhere near.
Right.
I wonder, you know, going back to the question you asked about prescription drugs, you know, are what, are they clear on what is bullying, you know, or are they, you know, if anybody feels that they're unsafe, then, then they are feeling unsafe. I think it didn't spell out that, are you bullied at school? Are, you know, there was not an explanation of what is bullying? Or, you know, is there a difference between bullying and, and something else? So there could be, there could So there could be, there could be that as well. Um, it, it, like you said, it was anonymous. So that, that lends you to some people just clicking yes for everything, clicking no. We, we always take those out as well. Um, so yes, 25% is definitely.
But that's a good point. I'm just, thinking of my own middle schooler.
Sure.
Sometimes use this word bullying because I wouldn't consider it bullying.
Just miss it.
It's not that you dismiss it.
Right. That's not what I mean by.
There's also, there's always time. It might five year span between, or no, seven year span and then similar numbers.
Right.
So it's not like we're struggling about it.
Yeah.
Just as.
So I think it validates that we need to continue on our SCL path. I think we need to continue strengthening our health curriculum, um, and developing more explicit lessons in there. And buying those lessons back to our ruler approach and other methods. So.
Like I agree that the charter that they developed for the ruler program personally, as in my teaching experience, went a very long way in addressing group dynamics and behaviors that I firmly believe can help prevent bullying. It's those, I, I agree with you. I think it's those unstructured times.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and also since we're just having a conversation about it, it occurs to me that at the middle school level, the kids get some very structured health and wellness instruction. And so by the time they get to high school, maybe that has had an impact because these numbers are way down, but they do not have explicit health and wellness instruction outside of PE in the elementary level in the same way as the health class that is offered and it's sequential and, and really well-ordered opportunity in the middle school. So maybe part of the benefit at the high school level is coming out of that.
Yep.
Anyway.
I probably offer that there's more of an emphasis on community behavior in the classroom than elementary. Big. Um, where it's not explicit health curriculum in terms of the systems and behavior and growth related topics. The whole concept around their creating their charter, the rules of the road, how we work in, in, um, support each other in community. It's fairly explicit. So I think what we'll be able to do at the local is kind of look at last year's spring data against this. We can see if there's, um, similarities or differences and then try to mine down and figure out what, what are these things telling us and what are some potential. Um, issues of the law and regulations.
I think it's worth noting too, developmentally, I mean, I remember middle school. And nationally, if you look at the percentages, they are much higher. You know, in, in, in nationally to relative to high school, these numbers, so they're different.
Yes. So they were incorrect in the first era slides there. So we're doing.
So now, so it.
That.
Uh, I'm not saying that it's okay or defending it. I completely appreciate the conversation for sure. And that, and like, I think it's important to think about developmentally, why middle school is maybe a different time than high school? And perhaps deserves different treatment, different philosophy, different vision, different emphasis. Um, maybe specific leadership, leadership specific to that age cohort.
Yeah. And I, I guess what I was trying to say wasn't specific to bullying. It was just more generally, when you do these surveys, you vet the data. Do you then use that to develop specific, like to focus and say, okay, here are some numbers that we're trying to buy. Here are some specific things that you're going to develop because of that. And then do you then track that? And I, I realize you said, you know, you weren't geared for the initial one, but I guess in general, is that the approach we take?
Mm-hmm.
But just be careful about setting that up on one instrument.
Yeah.
So they use local data, using other.
So that's one of my, yeah.
One of them.
Yeah. But I think it speaks to, you know, we, we do have, we deal with bullying situation, you know, high, the middle school and the high school. I think they are handled differently based on it. And bringing an element of education and almost a restorative piece to middle school and talking about that intent versus impact. And I think, you know, Joe does a fantastic job with the students and I'm not, I'm not there for those conversations. But we do talk as an administrative team about when we do have these situations and, and reach out to each other as resources. But maybe placing a more, more of an emphasis on that intent versus impact and the lasting effect, what your words can say and rather than being a punitive, you know, going after the student for punitive consequences. But having and starting that conversation at an age appropriate way that talks about what you're saying matters and, and what you're saying does have an impact on someone long-term and providing maybe some resources and education surrounding that so that there is more of an understanding. So I, I understand, you know, I'm fully aware that what I'm doing is, is bullying. And I, and maybe I'll think twice about what I'm saying or doing.
And I think too, sometimes with many of these, not using a one piece, that's going to be a question for us. Because the actual language of the question is, have you ever been bullied on school property? So.
Okay, that's.
Right. So that, so we did not change the language of the survey. So there, there's also some of this, that's why, you know, you triangulate it, right? You use multiple sources of what are like our reported bullying cases, what is the locals data said? And make sure we understand, have a better understanding of what the problem is before solution setting. Not, not to say we're not going to, you know, intervene.
Right.
But it's, we, we, you know, there's a little cautionary of like moment in time, springtime, the literal language was, so just, just.
And this is, this is really interesting because this is what will happen with some passion we're looking at and past data. They were over analyzing this one question and creating a lot of potential solutions and reasons here at the table. And I feel that's concerning. I think the, the practice of kind of what Nadi said, we look at the data. We look at some other data points and now we're going to try to kind of come up with some options for either staying the course with things that we're doing that could be aggressive or introducing some new potential solutions or invalidate it. But I, I think it's, it's noteworthy and it's something of concern. It's something we need to learn about.
All right. I want to put something entirely different on the table.
Sure.
Not, it can be very quick. I, I do think it's related to mental health and I know we said we're excited. I was surprised and excited to see the students are getting seven to eight hours of sleep per night. I was shocked by that. But also the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends nine to nine and a half hours for adolescents. And watching my middle schooler transition from the eight 30 start time at Memorial to, what did it, 7:45? Um, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends a 8:30 AM start time for adolescents. So just want to plant that seed for this body.
Been planted and died and been replanted.
Well, I am planting again.
Find some fertile soil.
Yeah. I'm trying.
And if the committee wants to pursue it, we are always open to investigating that. It's got merit.
My daughters are campaigning for that and I suggest that they exercise their debate skills. We've, we certainly have some experience in talking with districts that have done that and, and how they feel about it. I mean, personally, I think there needs to be a, a fundamental shift in what the expectation of a student is outside of these hours. Because if we're just moving the hours and not changing what happens, we're, it's semantics. You've just made a six, a seven or a seven and eight. If we're still expecting after school assault, another solid eight hours of work in sports and homework and family and all that, you've, you've just bumped bedtime by an hour. So it's, it's beyond the start time. And that's what I'm hearing from other places is, is that, but it's, it's a, that conversation, I think is a community, it's a community conversation. Maybe it is time for that, but it would, there would need to be a real shift in the expectation of students outside of here. Although I would say, and I've seen studies about this too, that adolescents, they start, starting to go sleep early. They'd like their body, I mean, I've seen that in my own.
Sure.
It just shifts. So also the kid who systematically will get a certain time irrespective of whatever responsibilities they have. Now that problem is telling them, they're on the right away. Oh, sure. Yeah. I, I just think we will, we could.
I agree on the topic of conversation.
Yeah. Planting seeds. Good.
Uh, no, we need to open up for a public hearing on the competency determination.
Fantastic.
I think we should do this one. We're still here. We can come back to that.
All right. Okay.
Getting.
I'm good.
Are we still here for this?
Please. So I guess I would ask, is there any public comment? There's no one left here. Oh, I'm sorry. Anne is here, but I think she's here for something other than the competency determination. Um, is there anyone online or Anne, do you have any input or suggestions or questions about the competency determination policy, which is the local policy that's going to take the place of the requirement of passage of MCAS to be the exit, part of the exit criteria for a high school student? Is there anyone online?
I can't.
Did anyone get any feedback or questions?
No.
Everyone get the newsletter?
Yes. The, the only thing I asked was to tweet that one little language that specified any RSD that that didn't change anything associated.
So we can't, you give the first look at it and you open it up. I'll bring it back on the 21st and we'll get our done. Solution. If anyone thinks of something to say at all?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hi.
Thank you for being patient. I know you lost time.
I do. I really do.
Hey, look at that. All right. Um, I'm actually going to attempt to be brief. I have a lot of exciting things and I'm just going to give you overview highlights. So, um, a few points I want to touch upon, and I haven't actually had a chance to connect with you. So we're going to go as far back as summertime and take you up to today and where we're headed for this year. So we had some really great work happening this summer. Both, uh, our teachers, which have the opportunity to engage in curriculum work, um, with their peers and colleagues in a collaborative way. And then also some supportive professional learning, which is folks opting in or different opportunities that we've offered. Um, so we had a really wide range of different work happening over the course of summer. Certainly not exclusive, but, um, there's a few highlights that I wanted to share, some really good things getting us watched and ready for this school year. Um, I also want to do a couple of shout outs once again, certainly not exclusive. Um, to all of the different great things happening this summer, but a few things that I got a chance to see and/or celebrate or support. Um, our elementary digital learning specialist, Chris Dwyer represented us as a speaker on a panel. Um, ironically actually connected with one of your earlier conversations with the Essex County Learning Collaborative on a PD day called Staying Human in the Age of AI. So he was able to share a little bit about what we've been doing over the last few years and our readiness as a staff to really move this forward into our classrooms with kids, um, and the challenges and the opportunities it provides. Uh, Jess Clemmons, who's a special educator at Essex, engaged in a really intensive PD institute with Desi around literacy launch and really thinking deeply about those early literacy foundational buildings and what does that mean to grow our practice? Um, and Caitlin Featherstone, who is a reading specialist, specialist at Essex. We, I mentioned to you when I, um, presented last spring meeting, um, that we went through the, um, program monitoring for our title one programming and our title grants programming. And we, we had really great results and they actually, because of the input, reached out to us to ask if we would share some of the strategies with some other districts that are going through the monitoring. So Desi invited, um, Caitlin or invited our programming, Caitlin as our representative. Was a really great reflection of the work to build those parental and family relationships, um, and supporting the students and, and helping other districts think about it. So some cool stuff happening over the summertime. Um, and then we had an awesome orientation, um, with the new staff and, and bringing the new staff in, building their community, connecting with each other. Our amazing Evan team, which all major, they came and had lunch together with our new hires to get to know them. And we tried something new this year. So our mentor, Cordare, she's a Pina Flood, she's a teacher at Evan Lloyd Elementary School. She helps to support the mentor mentee programming. So we worked together and actually she had a day of training the mentors. So going through what to expect, how to guide, what key things to think about. The same day we had our mentees in. And then at the end, they had a chance to, they break, they ate lunch together and then they could actually spend some time going to their buildings and do a tour and some of those connections. So it was awesome day, uh, awesome two days and a great chance to welcome some really phenomenal new practitioners into our district. So hopefully you'll get to, you'll start to meet some of them and get a chance to engage with some of them across our different schools and programs. Curriculum review, um, this might actually connect with some of the other questions that came up earlier. This is teeny tiny apologies if you can't see it. This is a document that's posted on our curriculum website that shares our curriculum review. Oh, look at you, Pam. Thank you. Um, plans for the next few years. This is updated. The previous edition had the past three years up till now. So there's been some slight revision. So quick snapshot of what we're working on right now. Right now, we're engaging in that first step of a curriculum and program review for the following. One is our English as a second language or multilingual learner, um, both curriculum and programming offerings. Um, the other is English, but this is grade six through 12. Um, the third is mathematics, and this is actually a pre-K through 12 curriculum review. Both the English and the mathematics actually have already launched. So we started that initiative two week, two weeks ago on that early release Wednesday, Wednesday, just getting our understanding of what do we mean when we say curriculum? We need tools, pedagogical practices, assessments, pacing, instructional methodology. Um, what are we going to do? We're going to see where we are. We're going to look at our data. We're going to read field research. We're going to deep dive into standards. We're going to set our vision. We're going to lay that pretty lens and make our path forward. Um, so they started that first step and started our curriculum inventory two weeks ago, getting it set up for the stretch of the year to two-year process, um, to get into that phase one, phase two. And that final bucket is that comprehensive health PE kind of SEL. That was a little, um, more nebulous. Not because it's not critically important, but because the different roles that are layered into that group are complex. So that's another one that we're, we're really launching more officially in with like a side dose of the digital literacy computer science kind of kicked into this year as well, just for fun. So we're also continuing work that was started in previous years, continuing the history of social science, the arts, the science, technology, engineering. With a little preview that you'll be receiving some summary reports about the social studies and science curriculum review coming later this fall or winter. You will receive one for the arts previously, um, and that implementation effort specifically world language we've mentioned earlier and then.
You get a copy of it?
Yeah. Yeah. It's our, it's posted on the public website and I'm absolutely happy to hear. Yeah. Um, preview for what we're working on PD, you've heard it come up a few times in the different, um, school driven plans. We're, we're taking a two-pronged approach. One is really thinking about that content-driven focus area and really embedding a lot of the efforts we've been trying to take across the map into really content-specific efforts. Um, so people have been saying curriculum review, which is a really specific process. But in general, we're really asking folks to lean deeply into their content. Are we vertically aligned? Have we articulated expectations for students at our levels? Are we using current, um, resources and practices? What is our data saying? We need all kids' needs. Um, and doing that work in that collaborative way. And then that other problem is thinking about AI integration. So the AI work, which is actually really exciting, is exactly that. What does it mean for teachers? What does it mean for students? I'm excited that I'm actually able to, uh, enter your two as a member of the state AI task force. And so it's been really interesting to hear where people are, what they're working on and to be working across the state with, um, across different departments in the department. But but then also different district, different roles, different, um, approaches and how folks are leaning into this idea of the impacts of AI. Um, happy to go off on a tangent about that sometime, but I want to be kind of respectful. This one piece I do want to shout out is we are partnering with RACE with MIT to be launching their organization is called Day of AI. And they're going to come in and do some of this really targeted training for us. So teachers can really get specific training based on where their entry level is. And we, while we've offered PD before over the last few years, this is going to be an everybody one, right? So some folks have opted in, we're early adopters, some folks started to dabble a little last year. Um, this is going to be a welcoming everybody into the conversation. So there'll be, you know, differentiated access points and continued conversations over the course of the year. So excited to continue to keep it updated on that. And just some quick updates, um, not going to name all of them. I just talked a little about the second bullet. We did receive a grant with Desi engaging in early literacy tutoring. It's really focused targeting on grade one that will be, is actually launching next week, um, targeting grade one specifically, but potentially that K through three range, using our data to prioritize. I want to shout out, um, heard a lot from some of our specialists or exploratory teachers around sometimes it's really hard being a singleton, being the only person that does this across schools. Or, and a lot of these, um, groups, Jake mentioned it earlier, have really new standards that are really robust and really dense. The arts, the comprehensive health PE. So there's a lot of these expectations that have really raised and some, sometimes it's a single person to try to maneuver. So based on that feedback, had a chance to reach out and, um, we're partnering with some neighboring districts. So Rockport, Hamilton, one of Georgetown and us are getting our folks together. So we've already launched, we had our, uh, we hosted. So we've already launched, we had our, uh, we hosted performing arts again two weeks ago. They came here and all I heard was just how awesome it was. They're pumped. They're ready to go. They're building these partnerships and connections. Um, the library media technology is here this week Friday. Um, visual arts is Wednesday, I think in Gilcham. Not a hundred percent sure on their location, but we're making these plans and connecting folks across districts to do this work, um, across. And start to do that, thinking, how are you adapting to these new curriculum frameworks? What does your curriculum look like? What is your vertical programming look like? Can we collaborate, share ideas and that? Um, so I think of, oh, the MCSS piece, that's the one other piece I want to mention. We have had interventions and it has taken place. What we haven't necessarily had is that proactive MCSS. So special education is, is separate from the general education, right? So that's, that's if you have an identified disability and getting that targeted programming. The goal of the multi-tiered system of support is that we're really being proactive in using our data, the intentional data screening to identify any students that might need a boost. Where that boost lives is the variability, right? Obviously strong core one curriculum and instructional practices is key. You can't intervene your way out of a tier one problem. But in the meantime, while we're building our tier one capacity, we want to make sure students are getting what they need as we continue to get better at serving them. So we're working collaboratively of both the middle school and the high school to be more, um, consistent with that articulated routine of that data screening, using multiple data sets for, you know, doing that proactive screening, identification, targeted support in the tier one classroom and with our interventionists, our reading specialists, math specialists, um, and other special educators to help move forward that planning for that targeted support. When I said special education, they don't need special education. Other educators that are targeting and providing supports, um, academic center, learning center, and, and with the different hopes of the elementary. They've had a chance to start to meet also vertically, which is helping them think about, like, does that look like as we're moving up through? How do students qualify? How do we, uh, document and target the data of student progress, progress monitoring? And make sure that, because getting what they need, if it, if we're providing intervention, it's working. If it's not pivot, we make sure that, uh, we're seeing impacts. Yeah, those are my thoughts. I, I think that's it.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm big, but I just talk fast.
Advisory.
What's that?
We have agenda items as well as advisory.
We do? Yep. It's very exciting. We're ready for, uh, first meetings in two weeks. We're, oh, we're. What's that? I'll send an email. Um, I don't know if you want to do questions or.
So, so help me understand the curriculum review timing.
Yes.
Every time you explain it, I think I get it. And then I read a school improvement plan. I'm like, wait a minute, there are already like implementing stuff. But we haven't heard anything.
Yep.
About what the recommendations are or where you're leaning or anything. So, and maybe it's, maybe it's what's being presented and timing, I don't know. But for example, arts. We got the vitality report, but you made an explicit point saying we're continuing in year two and we'll come back with recommendations. But it sounds like that's done.
No, that's not done. That's why we're still in that tier. That's, we're still, I, I want, I want to call them years. I want, they're more like phases and they might not all take exactly one calendar year. So Arts Council, we're still in that phase two. Um, we did the, that vitality index reporting of that measures where we were at was that first initial, like, here's where we are at. The Arts Council's been working over the last year and actually into the summer to be then narrowing down what the data said to identify an action plan. So we're, we're almost at the point, I expect, I'm hoping that by, you know, hoping that late fall, we'll be able to like come down to consensus. Part of what is happening is that some of those action steps is already like action being taken that will want to be on top of some of the sharing out and the reporting that will, will take place.
So help me understand science then.
Yeah.
Because the survey to the public just went, or to the school community just went out earlier this year.
No, that was last year.
End of last year? It wasn't that long ago that I took the science survey.
Uh, um, oh gosh, I would guess it was probably late winter.
Didn't feel that one. Anyway, um, so, so the school improvement plans that we just heard about have, and have action plans, like we are going to do stuff in science based on the.
Right.
Um, but we haven't moved, when do we get to hear what the, what the direction of those recommendations?
So.
So that we can be sure it fits, you know, where our, our vision is, our goals for students, whether or not you need resources to do that, right?
Yep. So the reports for the social studies and the science will be coming later this fall, early winter in a more summarized way. In the meantime, I can say even entering in with year one as we're going, like, you know, some of these cycles are just things that we're uncovering or practice that already might be happening, that might be isolated. Teachers start to collaborate to build around, they're realizing as they're working together, how we're not the same on this. So we want to start to do some of these pieces. So what, so, you know, there's the curriculum review process, which is a formal process that has steps that I'm happy to go through at a time that we have a little more time to go through each of those different steps to the process. Um, but the phases that we go through where a lot of these pieces that have just moved into that phase two is, it's on that initial, where are we at? Where do we want to go? And what does that path need to look like? That's that summary report that will be coming next to articulate what we're recommending as some of those next steps. Some, some things that are already happening, things that, as you said, might require, you know, shift in programming or, um, funds for supporting next steps, whether it's material acquisition or professional.
So will all of that, will all of that happen before any field testing starts or is field testing?
No, field testing is for any group that's, that's decided that a new curriculum material is needed, that then they would want to do a review of what published curriculum tools are out there, what they feel that we're not at that point with that.
But this is where I'm just getting, if phase two includes field testing, it's listed here.
Yes, if that's the, if that's the next step of the program.
Does that happen before we hear anything?
No.
Well, it could, because anything that truly comes here, like what she can provide in reports is kind of what they're finding, where they're leaning, where they're going. But what they'll end up with is if there needs to be a major adoption shift, that would come here with a white paper, a process by which the determination is made, the recommendation, because we'll need the funding source. And it would mark the substantial shift in direction from what we're doing already. Other things are informative, but not, not vote.
They don't have to win voter, us to cease stuff before implementing changes based on what they've learned in the process. And that's.
I mean, it's the fastest for us to continue to keep you up to date, to share findings, to share direction. But the only like official adoption would come like when we did like the literacy adoption or when we do the, the major curriculum adoption at the K five or K eight, depending on what you determine, there'll be a recommendation that comes forward. Similar to what we did with the literacy, that kind of goes through all the pros, cons and the why is the recommendation because it'll be a substantial.
And I could do a, for example, like with my updates, like over last year, I shared a few different points about the history of social science and shared that K two one two had done some field testing of the tools. And then I shared spring that this was the piece we're selecting moving forward. So it wasn't in a written report, but I will continue to maintain and keep you updated about some of those pieces. Larger curricular purchases that are more substantial, obviously with that. I'm going to continue to keep you updated on, on certainly the processes, but the formal reporting is something that, especially for those two buckets that we just believe moved to that phase two was going to be coming.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll probably need to ask it again.
That's okay. Well, and so what I can do is share the review, the, the document that outlines of what the area they have is with different phases. And then if maybe, you know, a follow-up question is needed, I'm happy to.
I guess along those same lines for anyone that's viewing the recording, you know, we were talking about math earlier and you want to know math there? You know, maybe tell a story. So, you know, this is not, it's not like math is just staying and analyzed for a couple of years.
Right. But so it, there's a bit of it that, so that's that part, right? That we don't want to just, we don't want to stay and analyze and just like, oh, look at that, look at that, look at that two years. Right. So that's part of like, sometimes it's really short, you know, it's a little iterative, right? We learn something, we try to continually improve because responsible educators want to, while we're doing more like wholesale, larger programmatic shifts that would come more that shift to those phase two and three. So thank you for identifying that because math is a, is a really wide swath of that, that pre-K twelve band, um, with a lot of potential next steps. Um, I'm assuming what I don't want to do is rush the process and not honor voices it needs from our, from our educators in our community. So, um, yes.
Unless it says six through twelve, like English says six through twelve, we would assume that mathematics or.
Yes.
Arts is pre-K through twelve.
You can, but I would assume, like, I would share something like the English as a second language. Um, we can be really nimble in that process because the number of educators that would be actually implementing that curriculum tool is one.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, there's different levels of pacing that you would assume based on the scale and the size of the department. Not that the process isn't really completed, but that, that, the amount of time it takes to engage in the different steps is variable.
Kind of something to keep in mind naturally with this too, is Heather represents the district curriculum office. So it's systems instructions for the district. It's not implementation at the classroom level. That falls to the principal for oversight. So we want to be careful, not careful, we all work together and there's a lot of cross-pollination. But in terms of who owns what and who's reporting on what, um, she's working to, to make shifts in kind of our overall coherence. Day twelve, um, horizontally as well along to elementary school to make sure everything built is together and we have a structure of a philosophy and a support. But there will be different variations, um, at the different levels and the different classrooms based on the needs in front of them. And I think we unearthed it tonight, even though we need to talk about it explicitly. There's kind of a funneling of coherence until you hit about 10th grade of the high school. And then it does explode into a lot of different things for different kids at different points in time, and that's by design. Not that there isn't an overall philosophy or addition of the graduate, right? But you're going to see different applications if you're, depending on different, um, pathways kids are choosing, what, what might be accessible to them. So we can maybe work to sketch that out. So that's a little bit easier. All of, but kind of who owns what in the classes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes a nice really complicated search for this chart that I can make up for you. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, just school community.
We are. Unless anybody's tuned in for CD.
Let's start.
Unless somebody's logged in to give us feedback on the confidence to the challenge.
Is anyone online? Have any public input on competency determination policy? School chief. There is any. Is there, all right.
Um, is there an update on whatever we're calling collaboration meetings with the towns or a meeting on the books or those conversations happening?
No.
No, we have a, like Jake and I were talking about this at the beginning. Uh, I think the last communication was with, um, the Essex group and they were waiting to kind of have a sense of what was coming out of FinCon and we were going to circle that. They were going to send some dates. I kind of said by the end of the week, if I don't hear anything, I'll put out another reminder that we're trying to get some dates on the quote. Mostly because there isn't many blank spaces right now.
Right. But yeah.
So you're waiting on.
I wouldn't say I'm waiting on anyone. I just don't think anyone's truly started the budget.
Okay.
We've reached out a couple of times.
We're not, we have nothing new to report on the budget yet. We're still closing out last year.
Yep.
We're going to be on the end of the year report. So it's not like we're, I mean, we can have conceptual conversations, but we don't have any numbers for anything to do.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.